Everybody, welcome to our Selma City Council regular meeting. It's August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, six oh one P M. In the Selma City Council chambers on a nice summer evening at seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma, California, nine three six six two. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar I D is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of threatening or abusive language or other acts which disturb, disrupt, or impede or otherwise render the orderly conduct of a city council meeting infeasible. Tonight's invocation is from Pastor Brad Twitty of the Hills. Pastor, do we have Pastor Twitty here from the Hills? Okay, would everybody please bow their head for the invocation? Lord, we pray that you give us wisdom and guidance tonight as we do the people's business. We pray that we do our very, very best to help the citizens of Selma, the residents, the business owners, and to make our community thrive and to work with everybody here to do the very, very best for our city. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Please stand up for them.
To the flag of the United States of America, which is indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Council member. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted on in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five four dot two B. City Attorney?
We would like to table item four two to the September second meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else with any agenda changes or deletions at this time? With that, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Anyone have oral communications at this time?
Teresa Salas. I, school started this a week ago, and there is a new law that was passed, I think it's called daylighting, where you can't park within twenty feet of, I think it's twenty feet of a crosswalk or the crossroads to keep from blocking the view of that crossroad so that the kids can get across safely and so they can be seen. I don't know how far that is. I don't know how measuring to look at a curb to say, I can't park there. And I was wondering if it was possible in any way to maybe make some markings on the corners so that people know where, I don't know, maybe paint them white because they're not red. Obviously, they can park there in the evening, but not in the daytime. Or some kind of markings on the sidewalk so that the public knows how far away they have to park during the daytime to keep those roadways clear, to be able to see it. You know, we, more than once, children have been hit in crosswalks here in Selma. And so I believe one child even died. So I think this is really important to make that our public aware of what that new law is. If there's any way, like I said, to mark so people can see that they can't park there in the daytime. Because I mean, I think we've all seen it where people are parked like almost right up to the curb, right up to the corner. If there, if it's not painted red, they will squeeze their car in there. And I just think it's something, and then if we could publicize it more, I mean, send flyers home with the kids at school, something that will get that information out to the general public to keep them a little bit safer, hopefully.
Great, thank you. Chief?
Yeah, that it's twenty feet on the approaching side, Mayor. So we'll, we'll work with the school district, get some communications out. School has a great communication infrastructure set in place. So we'll work with them, sir.
And this is a new law, so I would imagine there's a little bit of counseling time before the actual enforcement takes place.
It just took effect January twenty, January first of twenty twenty five. So we want to give our community time to kind of transition, acclimate to that new law.
Great, thanks, Chief. Yes, Councilman. Well, we're going to go right back to that. And our council member reminded me that we have to still do roll call. Probably be better to do that before we end the meeting. Probably want to get to that now.
Oops.
Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
I'm here. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Avalos, for getting that. Okay, back to oral communications. Anyone with an oral communications at this time, online or on the phone? We have someone first here in the public who'd like to give oral communications. Yes, sir?
Good evening, council and mayors. I wanted to ask a question about the old police station, if there was any plans for that. I know it's been about five years since the new one opened. Right now, currently, how the trees are going to go into the parking lots, apparently, we're going to lose, I think, around twelve parking spaces. That would be maybe a good place for an open land, for cars to park there for events, maybe have some golf carts, you know, patrolling the area, pick up the, you know, the committee members, bring them to the event, because it's starting to become an eyesore, because it's been there for quite a while. So I don't know if there's any plans with that. And then also last night, I was over at the cemetery, and I came across a German Shepherd puppy. I didn't know what to do, so I made a few phone calls. Unfortunately, nobody could take him or her. I couldn't see, it was dark. But I actually called the P D, and they actually came up. So I was very fortunate for that. But again, you know, our P D shouldn't be picking up animals. So I would hopefully, in the near future, hopefully soon, if you guys can make that an agenda item, you know, that P D shouldn't be picking up animals. I believe that, you know, we're paying this money to this animal shelter, and I believe that there should be somebody that, you know, that's there twenty-four seven, or on call twenty-four seven, at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I believe it's on seven parking spaces, too, that'll be taken up, but thank you for that.
Ellen, Mary, Selma, California. I'm just gonna piggyback off of what Brian said regarding the parking stalls downtown. I went by there, I want to say it was about a couple of nights ago, and they're already digging up the, you know, the dirt and all of that. And it is taking up the whole stall. And why is it that that needs to be done, to plant a tree? Can they at least make it smaller, or not even at all? That's just my question. And the reason I'm bringing it up as well is because before they actually start putting in the cement, because once that cement goes in, that's it. And right now, there's still time to save that space. So I just think that it would look, with those trees there sticking out, the sidewalk, it's just gonna make it look more smaller instead of wider. I don't know, that's just my opinion, but I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a comment? Anybody online or on the phone?
I see no hands.
Do you? With that, we will come bring the matter back to council and move on from oral communications to our first and only special presentation tonight, which is item one one. It's an information discussion item. It's regarding the fire station campus project and Griffin Structures Professional Services Agreement for Master Architect and Construction Management. Your chief, Webster?
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's gonna be just a brief presentation for that part, and then we'll be asking for dialogue from the council in direction. So as you're aware, the city has engaged with Griffin Structures for master architect and construction management for the design and then construction management. Once we get to that phase for the new fire station project, we have gone through the conceptual design phase of that project, and we're now at a point where the city can go out for R F Q for kind of the next stage of that project. Part of the conceptual design phase, and at the request of council at previous meetings, was to receive an engineer's estimate of that project to help the council, you know, identify the fiscal impacts of the project, and then also as a, as a planning tool to understand how that this, that this project will be funded going forward. And in that, as you recall, there was pretty significant dollar amounts associated with the complete build out of that project. And then there was the, the breakdown of the three phases for the specific project that Griffin presented. In that, what I'm hoping for is some, some dialogue with council and just a better understanding of how we proceed with identifying the, really the best route, or the most cost effective outcome and the most efficient process for the city to get the facilities that we need as we phase in this project. And as you recall, for the priorities that I've identified for this project, the E M S facility being phased one of that project is the most critical to our operations going forward. And I think right now, we're at a, at a point where maybe a strategic pause is warranted in, in proceeding and maybe looking at alternative solutions to bring for your direction. And, and what that alternative solution, in my mind, looks like would be to request an engineer's estimate from our city engineer team in what it would look like for them to design the site improvements for phase one of that project, as well as possibly reach out to either local providers of modules or other providers of modules to solicit bids for that bid up, build out, and then bring back to council, you know, a, just an alternative solution to consider, and ultimately make a decision as to how to proceed with this project going forward. And really, that's the, the overview of where we at. And I'd just like to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that, Chief. Does council have any questions or comments about the new fire station construction for the chief tonight?
I have a couple of questions, Chief. I just wanted to go back into the amount that we talked about. I know that you still, on your presentation, were looking at twenty-six million dollars on a three-phase. But realistically, and I have talked to my contact person in Fresno, and they're going with theirs, and this is a little larger than our plans, and this is fourteen-five. So I think we need to be realistic. And let's get to a plan where we can come and be right in there with the fourteen, because every, you know, they're, they're doing it, maybe another city's doing it, we kind of have to look at what's going on, why our phase, in three phases, coming out to twenty-six million. I mean, we're almost double. I think we need to go back and take a look at that, and, and let's get realistic. I think we need to go back and take a look at that and, and let's get realistic. Because we want to see that fire station and we need that fire station. But you're looking three phases. I mean, that could be another ten years and we need it now.
Yeah, thank you and completely, uh, understood. And, and I think, um, you know, a couple comments uh, to that is the fourteen point three million dollars, um, the, that dollar amount that Fresno is, um, sharing with you is just simply the construction cost of that project and doesn't incorporate the soft costs, the, um, and, and the other pieces that go into that project. The, and, and the other piece of that is, is that was bid out a, earlier than when this project will go. And so there, you're comparing some variance there with regards to total project cost. There's a, there's an estimate for that full build out of about nineteen million, um, you know, which is greater than the, the fourteen point two in construction cost. But I do agree that, uh, we do need to revisit and, and really, um, look at our options and what's gonna get us the best value and meet the operational needs of our city. Um, yes, the fire station is an important piece of, uh, the, you know, the public safety to our community. Uh, the, being able to house our EMS staff being the most critical, um, of that operational piece. Uh, but we, uh, and, and I think that being able to look at an alternative with proceeding with just that phase of the project and then really looking at the, uh, the build out of those phases, two and three, uh, and, and what's incorporated in that. You know, this project incorporates our, our headquarters, you know, which is an almost four thousand square foot facility across the street as well as a fire station that houses two companies and staffs six people. And so it's a, it, the scope of it is, is pretty large. Um, in comparing the square footage between the two projects, um, they were similar, but the full build out of the project that was proposed for Selma is actually larger by square, square footage. Um, not a lot larger, but, but it is larger. And so, um, you know, when it comes to the, uh, the operational needs of the city and ensuring that we can meet the response times and, and be able to reach our community members in the, in the, uh, in a timely fashion. Um, that's why this project was, um, designed to be phased in. And, and I think that, um, if you were to separate just phase two, which is the fire department operation side, which is where the firefighters sleep at night and, you know, the engines are gonna be that part of the project. Uh, and I don't have the, the number right in front of me here, but, um, was under fourteen million just for the construction cost piece of that. So, you know, again, headquarters being across the street, that doesn't have an immediate, well, doesn't have an impact at all on, um, our response, right? And, and so what's important and critical to me and, and the community is when they call nine-one-one and they need us, is that we get there in a timely fashion. Well, where my office is, I, that's, you know, that doesn't necessarily impact that, but um, my marching orders when I started this project was to incorporate that, uh, administrative facility across the street into this project. And so, um, you know, I, I think again, i- if we, um, look at an alternative solution of, of maybe separating that EMS facility from the project and see if there's a more cost-effective way than the design build for just the, you know, the, in my mind, uh, uh, more simplified build out, which is installing modulators and some site work versus uh, building a fire station, which is an essential services building that has much more, um, or higher, uh, design standards and that kind of thing where that's gonna take a different, uh, uh, you know, skill set, so to speak, to be able to do that. And, and so, you know, going back to what we need now, the fire station piece, which is phase two of that project, um, you know, we're not looking at twenty-six million dollars for that. And, and if we can scrub off some of the expense of the EMS facility and as you recall, Griffin Structures just going through the process of purchasing new modulators versus trying to remodel existing ones, um, there was a, an example given of savings of almost a million dollars. So, um, you know, that, that to me is, uh, uh, you know, not necessarily a red flag, but an indication that maybe we need to look at alternative solutions just for that. If there's a variance of a million dollars just based on design. And then, uh, we really revisit just the, uh, you know, what we're calling phase two, the operational piece of that fire station, uh, and focusing on that as the project, um, you know, and, and not maybe focusing as much on the fire department headquarters piece of that project until, you know, we run out of other things to spend money on for the, for the city.
And also look at just doing it in two phases. Don't do three phases. You don't, you don't need three phases. Do it in two phases and see what you can cut off or, because I mean, it's just, it, it could be done. It's just coming up with the right plan.
Councilman?
I'm gonna add to it. Uh, you know, uh, you know, you, we could separate the, uh, phase one and phase two for the future. Uh, we can go with the E- EMS operation first because it's necessary. You know, for, uh, operational and it's, uh, that generates a revenue structure plan for the city. And we can use that as phase one and that's, that's a doable plan. That's, uh, you know, you said early, we get modules, structure. We've seen these modules before. So, um, it's cost-effective and we could, it's doable. And then we can come back with phase two down the road with, uh, by then we should have some generated money from, uh, phase one from this, from the ambulance. And we can, uh, finish the phase two operation. You know, using our logic and we can be cost-effective there as well. So.
For that, Councilman?
Yep. Uh, thank you for all the hard work you've been doing in this project. I know that it's been a great task. One of the questions I have for you is, you know, we, so we sit here as elected officials while looking at all the money we're gonna spend, right? And one of the tasks that we were at hand at the very beginning was, how are we gonna generate the revenue to make sure that we could cover this cost, right? So you're coming to us right now telling us, hey, this is what I want, this is what I need. And I understand that the priority is putting our EMTs into some location. And as elected official, I look at it more as a CIP project, right? Capital Improvement Project. So if we're doing our due diligence, we would want to do three to five or ten or years project, right? We would say, hey, you know what? Come with us a three-year plan. I was expecting you would come and say to me, hey, you know what, John? We have the land. We're gonna do the modulators, but you know what? Maybe for right now, let's say that we're gonna budget for the next two years, some money set aside and say, you know what, I found a place that we could put our EMPs that's cost-effective for now and do a capital improvement plan and manage, manage the department and say, this is what it's gonna cost us. A ten-year plan, it's gonna cost us, make us, may, maybe take us ten to twenty years, but we're gonna budget this through a capital improvement project and say, this is what this is gonna cost, the total amount, this is what we can do and this is what it's gonna be costing us per year. See, I, I would rather have those conversations than come and be told, hey, you know what? This is what, I understand we got that land, but, but, but as an elected official, we need to ask you as the department head, okay, so we have this, but what other alternatives are we using for right now? Because I hear that that's a priority, right? That's number one. That's a priority. Those EMP, they need to know where they're staying. But for me, as a budgetary for the community, I know how much money we have per year and how much we're gonna set aside or what, what it's gonna cost us in reality, right? So rather than be told, I, this is what I need, I would rather say, hey, you know what, um, it's gonna take X amount of time. I'm gonna find them and put them here. It's gonna cost us amount. We're gonna have some cost savings. It's gonna factor into the distance of where they're gonna be staying at. Cause right now you had them on, I think it was Floral Avenue?
Yeah, they're currently in a, uh, business complex on Rose by the hospital.
So, and, and if we could, if we can actually, and I'm just saying as an elected official sitting on this body here and I'm working with you as the manager and come to a conclusion of saying the budgetary amount that it's gonna cost for this project is twenty-six million dollars. But if we do a three-phase and we say that, you know, we're gonna start off on this soft and we're gonna find a location just to get them there and then start budgeting. I would, I would rather think that that would be more of a cost-effective avenue to go because cutting costs at the beginning is gonna cost us at the back end. I could only imagine what the, what the cost-effective of a modular building is gonna cost us in thirty to forty years versus having the actual mortar built, bu- built, building. You know what I mean? What we'll get out of it as a community. So those are my own comments. I would rather come back and have more dialogue in regards to how we're gonna save and how we're gonna cut and how we're gonna get to the point of actually making sure that our EMP get somewhere to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? I'll, I'll make mine. So, um, Chief and I've discussed this at length. Council, we've discussed this at length um, for years now. And so we're, we're really seeing it kind of winnow down into these important priorities and these tiers. And the first one is definitely the EMS facility. Gotta have that. And we have the money for that right now. So, um, I don't think that's changed. I think we have the, the grant that the city received from Senator Hurtado plus the matching funds from the ambulance fund. So the city has that in the coffers to go ahead and move forward with that. I think, you know, it's, um, it's important also while we're taking care of that, which I think we need to do now, like right now, and make sure that we know we're gonna move forward on that and give the chief clear direction, which we, I don't know if we really made it as clear as, as, as we could up until now. But I think tonight what I would like for us to do as council is just make it crystal clear that, you know, we, we want to go out for an RFP or an RFQ or get quotes, get an engineer's estimate for putting the, um, getting those, that EMS facility in. And go out for bids if we need to and have this done within ninety days. Is that an unrealistic um, timeline, Chief? If we, if we start tonight, kind of giving you the, the starter gun to, um, to move forward on this EMS facility? Because as you've described it, it's just a situation that's unsustainable at Rose Avenue, just can't keep doing that. And we know we can't and we're, and we're in the same situation. So we really need to change that and improve that. And we have the funds to do it. So next phase would be to move forward and actually do it. What, what would be the, a realistic timeline to expect that to be done?
Uh, just so I understand, the timeline that you're measuring, is that the time from now to go to RFP for, for construction? Or the time from now to completion of the project?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes. Uh, the, so the first part, um, I can set up a meeting with, uh, Director Hawn and, uh, the city engineer, uh, David Horn and, uh, come up with some timelines. I think that ninety days is adequate time to get a significant amount of work done, um, understanding the, the requirements for, uh, you know, notices and all the stuff to go to RFP. Um, I wouldn't want to promise you ninety days for that, but I think that in that time, we can make a significant amount of, uh, progress.
Within twenty twenty-five, you can be ready to go to RFP. You'll have an engineer's estimate. You'll be ready to move forward and.
I believe that that would be a realistic, uh, goal. We've already done a lot of the work with regards to conceptual design of floor layout and, uh, and what the site improvements would look like. So, uh, I think using those items as guiding documents would assist, uh, you know, in expediting that process. Um, again, without having, uh, Director Hawn here or our city engineer to be able to share what their expertise is and the timelines associated with that, I'd be hesitant to, you know, give you that time window. But I, I believe as the fire chief that that would be very achievable.
And how about the horizon after that? Of actually getting the project completed and getting folks moved in there?
You know, again, the, um, the site improvements to that facility is gonna, um, include some asphalt, some, uh, fencing, uh, some curb and gutter modifications and then the utilities, you know, water sewer. Uh, PG&E is always the wild card. Um, you know, and then the build time for, uh, uh, you know, a custom module, I, I don't, not aware of what that looks like or, you know, what their timelines are. Um, but I will, um, you know, I will start engaging in, with the people that know those timelines and understand all of those pieces of the puzzle to be able to provide you with the timeline.
So at the next council meeting, maybe you could have those discussions and you could let us know with a little more certainty when that RFP is gonna go out and what's gonna be in tail with that and what the horizon is for the completion of the project. That being said, um, council, we, there's still, uh, fire station to build after that. And, um, to my mind, we really need to get this EMS facility done first. Um, but we don't, we can't forget about the fire station. It has to be a CIP.
I'd be at phase two, Scott.
Phase two.
I, you know.
And that's more of, you know, looking at that two to three-year timeline. Um, also, um, I would have liked to ask the chief, what, what role, uh, would Griffin Structures be playing from here on? Because they really, eh, so far, they've, you know, come to the council meetings, they've prepared these timelines, these kinds of conceptual costs. Nothing really concrete that, you know, you can actually build from or anything, but they've given us a schematic of where we're going from the future. Do they have a role in the future of the EMS, the fire station and then the fire station management offices?
So their engagement and, and their scope of work associated with their agreement is to, uh, one, be the master architect for the project and then two is be the construction management firm for the project. And so what they do is, and where we're at, uh, with them is we're at the part where we go to RFQ, which gets qualified bidders for a bridging architect and the actual contractor to do the work. Uh, once we get the bridging architect on board, what their role is, is to finalize the design into actual, uh, living construction documents. And so they, they go through all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, uh, identify all of the finishes, uh, all the appliances and soft cost items that are gonna, that are gonna be part of that. Uh, they get that into a bid set to where, um, a contractor can then go and construct, um, you know, what we've identified that we want. Griffin's participation in that is ensuring that as we go through the solicitations of each phase of that project, remembering that, um, the city will retain the ability to hit pause at any phase of the project and will have the opportunity um, to identify the, um, the specifics of each phase when it comes to, you know, the finishes and all of those things. And let me backtrack. So the RFQ, RFP process for this, uh, bridging architect and the contractor will include a, um, a not to exceed amount ultimately, they called it something different, but it's a not to exceed amount. And so you'll be able to see that, uh, you know, if we were to continue with, uh, you know, a phase one, say I come back after looking at alternative solutions and that's just not feasible and it's best to continue with Griffin for phase one, phase two and phase three. Uh, we will be able to see, uh, a not to exceed amount for all three of those phases. And so ultimately what happens is we agree upon the terms of whatever that amount is and then it's their job to be able to deliver that while not exceeding whatever it is, you know, that dollar amount is. And so, uh, we also get to identify the timelines of how those things get built. Uh, and so if we want to separate phase one and phase two from each other, we'll have the ability to do that. If we want to separate or include phase one and phase two together and exclude phase three, we can do that. We have a lot of autonomy when it comes to identifying the rollout of that project. And so, um, yes, Griffin Structures, uh, has been engaged from the beginning. They did all the programming. They did all the conceptual design work. Uh, and I will say that they have been, um, a great partner with regards to the value engineering that they've done in the conceptual design and the experience and knowledge that they bring, um, in the, you know, the building of, um, of fire stations and police stations and those kinds of things. They know a lot of tricks of the trade and that kind of thing. And, uh, you know, Dustin Alamo, who came in and presented, who's leading that project is, he's truly has been an advocate for the city of Selma and, and looking for the, out for our best interests when engaging the, um, the architectural firm and, um, and in, in assisting in the language development of the RFQ documents. And so it really allows us a lot of autonomy um, with, with that piece. And so, um, you know, again, I, I think that, um, you know, bringing back a, uh, an alternative solution and the timelines that you're asking for and, and being able to present that to you and say, you know, this is what we found, this is my recommendation. And then, you know, and then we, we hit the, the green light basically and proceed.
So we're being clear with you, right, Chief? You know, you know what we're looking for. Okay, real good. Do we have any public?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Director Hawn here.
Oh, where are you?
I, I'm, I'm zoomed in.
I, I'm, I'm zoomed in. I'm actually in Chicago at a conference. Um, but, um. To Chief Webster's comments about Griffin, I have to agree that we're at a point with Griffin. For design and construction of the actual fire station itself, that I feel like, um. What's gone into the programming and all the pro, the stuff that, uh, Chief Webster just mentioned, we really, um, should consider. On the build out, at least for the fire station, that Griffin be our contractor. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, uh, yes, we can have those meetings and discuss, uh, site plans with our city engineer. And what needs to happen for the EMS station, um, as far as timelines, that it, that'll take whatever time it takes. We can get right on that and start having those discussions. Um, I've al- also reached out to Mobile Modular. Um, and I'm trying to facilitate a meeting with their project manager. Uh, to give them conceptual drawings and have an idea of what it would cost. For a modular unit to sit on a slab on grade, once the site work was done, um, that would have to go out to R F P. Um, and a public bid, uh, but we can absolutely start having those conversations and getting that, uh, in motion. So I just wanted to chime in and say.
Right, so you're, you're hearing us loud, loudly and clearly, right, um, Director Hawn? That we're looking for the first phase, accelerating that and the fire station phase, not pausing it. But, um, clearly putting it behind, uh, priority of the EMS facility right now. So that's, and we're looking for a timeline of ninety days on the R F P, if possible. And then we'll see based on how long the site work's gonna take and the bid for the modulators. Um, how long we can look at for, um, for completion for this site. For actual EMS personnel to move in there and for the site to be operational as a EMS facility at first. Are we all on the same page here?
Yes, sir. I do understand that. And I wanna, I wanna express to you and council as well. That, um, staff wants to get this done as quickly as possible as well. You know, we're currently investing money into maintenance on. Again, another facility that's not owned by the city, where we're having to house under contract. And, um, rules to that contract where we're in charge of the majority of maintenance for those facilities. So, um, the, the fact that we're putting a lot of money into maintaining facilities that aren't city owned. Uh, believe me, it's at the top of our priority list.
Is it windy there right now, Director? Cause they call it the windy city.
It has not been windy, but I can tell you, it has been stormy and overcast. Um, some. Pretty amazing lightning shows the last couple of nights. And this morning, uh, eight forty-five, it was seventy-two degrees, ninety-three percent humidity. So.
Wow, yeah, that's the Midwest for you. Well, uh, learn a lot and we'll see you, we'll probably hear you for, um, departmental reports coming again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any, any comments from the public? On the new fire station? Actually, the new EMS facility, then the fire station. Anybody online or on the phone, deputy city manager? Other than Director Hawn?
Other than Director Hawn, there's nobody with their hand raised.
Thank you for that. And this is a discussion item and a presentation item, and we will now move on to our item number two, which is the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar. Will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar. And made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does council have any items? An item or items they would like removed from the consent calendar tonight? Register should be on there. Two, two, where is? Yeah, two, two. Item two, two, councilman?
Oh, okay. I, I'm, I'm just, uh, on this.
Hold on, just real quick. Is there a, um, motion to approve items two, one, two, three, two, four, and two, five? All right, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Osagara?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo? Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Guera?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, item two, two, Councilman Avalos?
Oh, okay. I, I, there's two items here that I just want to discuss. The eighty-seven, four, six, six, uh, Livmore, Cashmore, Whitmore, uh, you know. And also, uh, I don't know, the same, eight, seven, five, five, two, uh, Livmore, Cashmore, Livmore. Uh, these are two amounts. One is, the first one is three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And the second, they're both the s- basic law firm. The other one is four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And. I just wanted to put a record. A discussion on. Where are we at? And what items are on this? Um, privately, uh, these, these particular items.
So, um, Councilmember Avalos on those, um, the R, the H R, um, division, so the Libber Cassidy Whitmore are.
Yes.
Our H R attorney. Um, as discussed earlier, they're just as legal services that they're, um, charging us for.
Is there, let me, let me rephrase that. Is, is the, are these items? These legal services? Have they been brought to? To the city, uh, the, the city, uh, city manager here and the attorney, these particular items that are on the.
I can tell you that today, um, interim city manager Conkle reviewed the last bill. Um, and signed the warrant for the next payment. Um, all of the items that were requested paid did have. All of the appropriate and proper documentation, um, with the items. And so, um, those have been reviewed by him, um, that I brought in today. So, and I'm sure that he has done that in the past with those items.
I mean, I mean. I mean, I see these two items, you know, I'm gonna say. They must be two different entities, two different claims. Is that what it is? Basically, is that one claim or what's the deal? Legal services? Or there's more than multiple claims?
One of them is for your yearly consortium. And so, um, the, uh, Libber Cassidy runs a consortium. So we get so many hours of attorney services every month. We get so many calls. And we identify when we call them that it's a consortium call. And so then we're not charged anything for that. So those are kind of the easy ones that aren't, um, very specific, like a wage and hour question, um, you know, those kind of things. And so it actually in the long run saves us money, um, because it's not, um, it's not billable. And so we pay a one-time fee. It's a, a service they offer to all of, um, their, um, people in the consortium. And then the second bill is actual work that they've done, um, for us. And so it's two, two separate items and consortium is a, is a one-time fee every year that you pay.
And then the third question, are the, these claims that we have, um, this. Legal services, are they, how would I say? Are they claims that are? Old claims, new claims, or a, or new claims that just popped up? Are they pertaining to?
The ones that I've seen are all current claims. So they're ones that they're closing. The city attorney has worked with them, um, on. Um, agreements, um, for different very, various employment agreements that are closing down. So, or there are a couple that are continuing.
And the other issue on these particular claims, uh, they investigate as far as being the, how would I say? Legally sound claims, you know, I mean, this. Or they just say, hey, we're gonna investigate it and then keep paying on this thing. And, and this.
No, I can, I can assure you, um.
We want, you know, take me what answers, bottom line.
Yeah, a- absolutely. Um, you know, the police, the police department has had to use Libber and Cassidy for some employment issues that they've had. Um, there are some, you know, just different outstanding employee issues that we have to take to an H R attorney. Um, you know, specific. And so, and I can tell you that Libber and Cassidy is top notch. Um, in the prior city that I worked for, they were the firm that we also used. And, um, it actually, I always said it always ended up costing you less because that's all they do is employment law. And so they're not having to research, they're not having to spend time trying to figure things out, cause they already know the answer when you're asking those questions. So they're very, um, concise in their, um, investigations and the things that they offer to the different cities.
And on the other note, my claims are laid out, you know, from the perspective. Do we do any ourselves as far as, um. Look, to identify if they're, look, investigation, legit claims? And our, and our situations that are pertaining to the city? Pertain to anybody who works in the city as far as, hey, are these claims really just, are just throwing claims out there? And just to throw them out there and just spend money. I, I, are these claims legit by this company?
Yeah, I, I, like Margie said, um, this is a very reputable firm. And one of their duties is to investigate claims. They're not a, a, they're not opening up your, your wallet, if you will. And so one of their duties is to make sure that the claim is a valid claim and then, um, uh, handle it appropriately.
I just keep seeing these things popping up, you know? You know, I mean, I, I mean, I'm, what I'm trying to find is, okay, a solution to. These, what is going on? You know, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. Are we doing something wrong in our, 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 our city training or what, or you know?
For any city, it's a very normal occurrence to see your H R attorney bills every single month. And so even in the, in the private sector where I came from, um, my last employment. It was normal for us to be on a monthly basis with our employment attorney. And so that's just kind of the way things are today. Um, it's unfortunate, but, um, and even when I was with the city of Salery, um, they had employment every single month. And so not uncommon to see these bills.
Okay. This is my colleagues.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Page twenty, and it's check number eight, seven, four, seven, zero for Motorola Solutions Inc. And it says P D antenna installation for forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty and seventy-one cents. What was that for, Chief?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, uh, that was for a, an antenna repeater that's placed in the city of Partlier. Uh, because they have a large or tall tower, which allows us to improve our radio transmissions on the northeast. Portion of the city of Selma. Additionally, we really tried to think ahead based on kind of some of the growth that's going out that way. To improve that signal for, uh, radio communications. So we actually, our initial, uh, quote for that was a hundred and ten thousand. I believe we lucked out, if you will, due to the, uh. I don't know, shortage that then became an overage in equipment. So we got it for just under fifty thousand. Uh, for the equipment and installation. So, and then again, that, that should last us for some time. As the city of Selma grows into the northeastern part of the city of Selma. And I, I think the infrastructure will be a lot less today than it will be in ten years. And we can get ahead of the curve.
Chief, would that be a reimbursement, though?
No, Mayor Protem. And, and additionally, that is in last year's budget. We did budget a hundred and ten thousand dollars for it. Uh, but we only spent less, a little less than fifty thousand. I can't tell you the exact number. But, but we did do a little bit of savings and that did come out of Measure S.
Okay. So it did come out of Measure S?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There are an M O U, the city signed with the city of Partlier. Who's responsible for the physical damage to the antenna while it's in their city limits?
It, it would be.
I still remember seeing an M O U for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, Mayor, I don't remember. We, we planned this two, three years ago. We got approval, uh, two, three years ago in the budget. It's just, it's just been, you know, with the employ, with the, um. Equipment shortage, it just kind of get pushed back and pushed back. So I, I have to do a little bit of research on that.
I just wonder, like, if there, maybe it's on the city's floater policy and it's a scheduled location.
My apologies. It might be included in our radio communications agreement with Partlier, cause we provide law enforcement dispatching to them. So it, it may be included in that.
They may maintain it for us. Maybe.
Pro- probably not, Mayor. We're gonna be, but, but it's not a piece of equipment that typically has to be.
We don't pay rent for that piece of land.
No, 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 sir.
Okay.
No, sir. We, no, we do not.
Got it.
We, we also have a, uh, a piece of equipment in Fowler, uh, that they're getting, um. Up and running again because Fowler, uh, did some work to their water tower. So again, these are things that, that were done five, ten years ago, uh, thinking about the future of Selma. And, and how we can provide the best quality of our community.
And it's hardwired in there and plugged in somewhere to an energy source there that we're not being charged for. Um, I just have one to build on, um, Councilman Avalos's question, the, see, it's, um, page seventeen. Eight, seven, four, two, nine. You couldn't miss it. It's the biggest item on the check register this month. It's the, um, R M A. Um, first quarter deposit and it's one million, thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. I have never seen that exceed a million bucks. Now, my question is, is this for Irma, which is the, the employment practices? Or is it the R M A, which is the workers' comp and the auto? Or is it both? Director Moreno?
Um, what you have before you is the, uh, it's a quarterly payment and it does incorporate the, uh, workers' compensation program, the liability program. As well as the, the auto physical damage program, including the, also the, um. Property as well. So it's all the programs together. And again, it's to the quarterly payment.
Is E A P, the E, you mean the E P L I?
Yeah, it's the E A P, them, uh, it's called the employee assistance.
Assistance program. But it's not the, um, employment stuff. It's not the wrongful term. It's not that, that we get through Irma. Is that correct? To me, I think that's another division.
Uh, no, it is also included in that. That is our employment practices liability program. And so that.
It is included in that. So that's the whole total.
Single program that you have with the R M A. Um, the employee assistance program is where employees can call in to receive counseling on different items and stuff. Great program for the employees.
I, I think what I was hearing from Councilman Avalos was, you know, we're, we, I requested loss runs at the end of the year. We looked at the loss runs. There were lots of losses on there, which is probably pretty common with cities. But what I think we wanna avoid is, you know, there's a pretty big deductible, especially for the employment practices claims. And so we wanna make sure that all those claims going in are claims that should be reported. That can't be investigated at the local level, because with a fifty thousand dollar deductible, that means somebody's gonna make some. Pretty big money on just investigating that claim. So we don't wanna just throw those claims and turn them in. It increases our loss experience, which. You know, ultimately we pay for as a city. And, um, it, it's something we don't want to have haunt us in the future. In terms of coverage availability as well, in terms of the R M A ever experienced problems and starts letting cities go. Which can happen in hard markets sometimes. Um, so that's, that's what I'm talking about there. And then, um, I have just a couple of other items and then we'll move on, or me, and we'll move on to the public. Um, on the Calcard. Um, I'm looking at page one thirty-three. Um, keyless locks for city hall. Is that like nine grand? I, I've never, I didn't know keyless locks were so expensive. Is this, is that what they are these days? How many do we put in? Finance paid for it, but I know you didn't install the locks or award the job. Director, are you listening from the windy city? I don't hear anything.
So, yes, I'm here. I'm sorry. I couldn't get my mouse moved over.
Um, keyless locks for city hall?
I'm sorry?
Keyless locks for city hall?
Keyless locks for city hall.
Yeah, why are they so expensive?
Uh, it was because the kind, the type of lock that was asked for by the H R director.
And what kind of locks were asked for by the H R director?
Um, they want, they wanted the key fob tie, uh, style of lock.
Is that the most expensive type of lock that they offer, Director?
It is, is, it is more expensive than the numbered coded lock that's on there currently.
Do the other, um, properties, the other city-owned properties have this kind of keyless lock installed in their buildings?
No, sir. The only, uh, building in the city that I'm aware of that has anything close to that.
No, sir, the only building in the city that I'm aware of that has anything close to that would be the police department and they have carded, uh, keyless locks, uncoated locks.
Are those as expensive as these kinds of locks we're looking at?
Those are quite a bit more than the ones that we're actually looking at.
Okay. When would you put these kinds of keyless locks in as opposed to a more economical version, Director?
Um, these are put in more typically for a fail-safe. So if an employee is terminated, it is easy to go through IT and have their fob that gets them through those doors into certain areas of City Hall and other buildings. You can disable that fob. The fobs basically, when you buy in bulk, are anywhere from two to seven dollars apiece. And you don't have to try to get keys back from an employee or a disgruntled employee.
So it's easier to, um, um, do your post-termination, yeah, deactivation of that employee if, if and when that happens, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for illuminating us on that. Um, the next item is the Apple, uh, next page, the iPads. I see the expenses there, but I, I'm still using my paper. What are we, uh, what are we doing on the iPads?
We're, we're going through beta testing on syncing the iPads and working through management, security and, and those type of things right now through IT. We're working on trying to have that resolved by next week.
By next, so by next meeting, those of us who wish to use the iPads will have the iPads.
That is, that is the hopeful goal.
And there will be some sort of IT preparation? Testing or training, whatever it's called these days.
Trust me, there'll be a walkthrough because again, it is, it is the city's equipment, it is the district's iPad, um, or the mayor's iPad for, for that. It belongs to the city. So there will be, um, a form, checkout, rules, protocols for installing apps, all of those type of things we'll walk through with, with council.
I knew you were gonna say that. All right, thank you for that. Um, does Public have any questions about the check register tonight? Come on up.
Risa Salas. Check number eighty-seven, four, twenty-six to the city attorney. It was for forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Is that one month of city attorney fees? Um, I did request records from the city clerk regarding what we have paid to the city attorney since he came on board and she was only able to give me up through March. And it was just kind of scattered, it wasn't like a listing or anything. It was like a copy of a check and a copy of an invoice and it wasn't anything that I could track. And so I would like to personally know what date he officially came on board as the city attorney representing the city and how much we have paid him each month to date, so that we know exactly what we've paid our city attorney. I have two others, so.
Did you want to respond now or wait till Ms. Salas is done with her other items? You will look into that?
Or if Finance could get it for me, if they could compile it. But like I said, I went through the records request through the city attorney, but it was very incomplete what I received.
Okay, you're gonna only get so much from a city attorney. I mean, none of us, I've signed checks before and you, you see almost nothing because it's, all of this is privileged, what they, what they do.
I, I don't.
But you can see the bill.
Yeah, that's, that's all I want. I want to know how much we've paid him, what date he was officially became the city attorney and what we've paid from that.
I can tell you when, yeah, I can tell you when that, that was December twelfth, that's when we.
December twelfth?
And we have the agreement, yeah, there's a written agreement. It's not handwritten, it's typed, by the way.
That's fine, that's fine, that doesn't matter. The other, the next thing is a check number eighty-seven, three, eighty-seven. It was, um, for the downtown bid for social media service. One quarter was five thousand, four hundred dollars. And so I'm assuming that means it's twenty-one, over twenty-one thousand dollars per year for social media service. Is that something that the city is paying or is the bid paying for that? What does that consist of?
Deputy City Manager?
So the bid adopts a budget every year and they adopted that as part of their overall budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six for promotion of downtown events, downtown of the downtown business district. So that is incorporated into their budget allocation through the collection of assessments through business licenses and then the other contributions that they receive as part of their budget.
The city's not paying for that?
That is technically out of the bid budget.
It's out of the bid budget?
The bid is a subset of the city, but it is coming out of the budget set aside for the bid.
And, okay, and do we know who Social Media Service is?
It's Advine is the name of the social media company.
And then there's a whole list of employees there, it says HR, PR, and like a whole list of, and they each received quite a bit of, well, over a thousand dollars. I mean, different amounts for different employees and I was just wondering what that was.
Do you want to tackle this one, Margie?
Sure. Went, we had a, we're a little bit short-staffed right now. Our payroll person is out on leave and so we had some issues with our payroll run and had to issue employees are required to be paid on Friday. And some of them did not get their direct deposits. So in, to make sure that they did receive payment, they were cut AP checks. And then those AP checks for anybody that picked them up, we had a percentage that picked them up, some didn't. And so those were then returned to the city. So it's a wash and so it was, they, they then got their payroll checks. But that was to tide them over until, to make sure their direct deposit went in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then I'd urge you to come to a bid meeting because you'll see the Advine is on a actual three-month deal right now. So it's renewable, it's, it's not an annual contract, it's eighteen hundred bucks a month. And I believe it's Deputy City Manager, it's coming up here pretty soon and so it'll be up again for review at a bid meeting. All right, thank you. Those are publicly noticed. Anybody else with a question about the check register?
Rose Robertson, ten, fifty-seven, I'm just gonna piggyback off of that. I'm just blown out of the water. I've been sitting in that chair for fourteen years and not ever have I ever seen this CSJVRMA, Human Resource Insurance Payment Quarterly, one million, thirty-three thousand dollars quarterly. We all can add, we all can add. In three and a half years, I've been here on the record stating about these quarterly payments. And probably I'm gonna go back when I was on the record stating about it. It, it was close to three, four hundred thousand at that time. This was three and a half years ago and I would constantly ask about it. We are at one million, thirty-three thousand dollars quarterly, everybody. That's four million dollars, a couple hundred thousand dollars of our taxpayer money. Wow, just wow, in three and a half years? There needs to be some kind of focus on this tremendously. I'm sorry, four million and a hundred thousand dollars quarterly. I mean, four million a year, but a million thirty-three quarterly. I, I, I just stared at that thinking I was not looking at that correctly. But it's correct, wow. I just wanted to state that for the record because I will be going back to that amount when I was here every time for the record, questioning that and nobody had any answers to it. Thank you for you guys asking for the questions, wanting to know more about what is going on with that. Thank you.
Anybody with any other oral communications at this time? Anybody online or on the phone? With oral communications about the paycheck, payroll register, check register?
I see no hands rates.
Is there a motion to approve this item? Is there a second to approve item two-two? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Apples.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo. Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, okay, now moving on to departmental reports, City Manager Kunkel.
Nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Question for you, City Manager, it's supposed to be on the wrong side of a hundred, starting Thursday. Are we, are we all set to have our cooling centers center open at the, at the PD?
I'm sure I can coordinate that with the chief to make sure it happens.
And then the Christian Cafe recently added Central Air and has been talking, I believe, with our city about opening as a cooling center? Have they officially done that yet? Does the city know? Do we know if they're, if they're a cooling center yet?
Haven't reached out to me yet, I don't know if they've reached out to staff.
Okay, thank you. And then City Attorney. Okay. Um, I have an issue for you tonight, City Attorney. The, what I would like to see, I receive, and it pertains to a form I got, I received, I believe everyone in the council received it for, from the central, speaking of insurance, the central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management Authority, that's what we just talked about on the check register. There is a request for each council member and their spouse to sign off that we understand that the city has an accident policy, a trip travel policy for, I guess, official business that the council members make to city functions that if we buy the farm on the way over, so to speak, or meet our untimely demise, the city will get that, get those proceeds and not the spouse. So not only do we have to sign this, our spouses have to sign it, that they understand that. My question is, I, you know, I'm in the insurance world, so I've seen policies like this. My question is, I'd just like to see the actual policy language and I'd like to see the limits. I'd like to know how much the city actually gets in the event that, that the city collects.
There's, um, the city is, actually gets to pick that and so I can take a look and see what you have done in the past. Um, this also includes insurance on your directors also, and so if they're in.
Commission directors?
Uh, your department heads, I'm sorry.
Departmental heads.
And so what we, what I had previously used this for was I would take a look and see what would a special election cost in if, if you, you know, cease to be here. Um, and that's about where you would set that limit. So you're just trying to cover any additional cost to the city if something were to happen to a council member.
So that's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see the limits and I'd like to see what plan we've selected and how much it costs the city. All right, thank you. Okay, Deputy City Manager?
Uh, nothing to report other than, um, Community Development, uh, said goodbye to two staff members last week. So we were staffed at six last year, we're down to three right now. So we just want to assure people we'll get to questions and concerns and inquiries about permits, uh, development and things like that in a timely manner, but just bear with us while our staff is mulling through those. Some of our staff are also assigned to other departments at the moment, so we're just working through that right now.
Have you begun a posting?
We're, we're gonna go out for two positions in planning that are both budgeted, city planner, which was vacated, and assistant planner.
All right, and the city planner, who was the city planner, he went to, to Texas?
Oh, city planner went to Sacramento.
Sacramento, okay. Thank you, all right. Um, Councilman Avalos, did you have a comment about the trip insurance?
Back on the, uh, particular insurance thing. In the past, we, this is a true story. In the past, we had a, a, actually a mayor passed away. And the city council at the time, uh, the demise, we, we, the policy, well, back then, we didn't run a special election to save the city money. The, the four council took applicants that in that, in the time that, in the past that served in government and, uh, or be, wanted to be a part of it. And we did choose somebody at that time. And after that, that term ended, that individual and then the election process started, zero, that person can run again or, or another, or it's open. So we sent a ton of money by doing it that way. Okay, that, that's a true story. We didn't have this insurance policy at the time.
This insurance policy, I was.
We did have an insurance policy on the employees. We had a set amount for all the employees, even, even the council people, we had an insurance policy on them. Okay, and it did go to the spouse. Did not go back to the city.
We do, and we currently have insurance policies on all of our employees that they designate. This is a business policy, which is totally separate from the life insurance policy that is on all of you as council members that you can designate and as, and the employees. So you, this would, this would have to be you being in the, in this, going to a city function, um, something like that for it to be enacted. And so this policy I know has been around for probably thirty years. Um, I had been on the RMA board, um, as an executive member for a very long time and this policy is not something that's new. Um, what, I can't tell you what is new is I had not see where the, not seen where the spouses had to sign. Um, we in the past had been able to just sign you up for the policy and then, uh, without you even really knowing it. And so something has happened since I've been off the board where someone, you know, probably filed a claim against to get the money and so. Um, but it is totally different, you do have poli, uh, insurance policy, a term insurance policy that does go to whoever's been designated um, by you, um, for your benefit.
That's the first I've seen in my life, you know, this first, I've been on the council all the years. That's the first policy I've never seen like that. The reason why, back then, when I came, when I first came on the council, there was a small minimum of life insurance policy for city members, very minimum, and we increased it dramatically. And I think you already know the numbers, okay? It's not, you know, it's a very good policy. And we felt that people that work for the city or in the council, they deserve that. Uh, you know, every day, day in, day out, you never know. And it did happen to one of our council peers, unfortunately, and it does happen in life. But, so that's all I have to say on that issue.
I hear what you're saying and I think it's gonna be interesting to see how much it costs the city because maybe we want to allocate our resources more as a city towards the the group life rather than a trip accident policy. Thank you. Okay, um, City Clerk?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Finance Director Moreno?
Mayor Robertson, nothing to report.
Okay, Fire Chief Webster?
Uh, just one announcement, we just concluded our fire captain's recruitment and we had an internal candidate that was selected, Jason Gray. He was previously an engineer, he's worked for the city, I think, just over twenty years and he accepted that position. He'll be, uh, um, we'll bring him in to reintroduce you all to him and we're just excited to have him as part of our management team formally. He's been informally an acting captain, I think, for the last five years. And so, um, anyway, congratulations to him.
Definitely forward to that. Police Chief Alcoraz?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'll make this brief. Just a reminder, on August twenty-seventh, which is next Tuesday, uh, from six to eight PM, District Attorney Lisa Smith Camp, as well as Sheriff John Zanoni, myself, will be presenting a fentanyl awareness presentation to community members and that'll be held at the high school in the cafeteria again Tuesday, August twenty-seventh from six to eight PM. We'll ensure we each an email out tomorrow, council members, and we'll put some social, some information on social media as well. And I believe the high, I mean, the school district will also be putting out information for us. So again, that's next Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, six to eight PM. Additionally, we want to thank Public Works, we've had an uptick in graffiti. This commonly happens when school starts, kids are back home from vacation, they start getting a little unruly and, uh, but we've been on top of it, communicating. but we've been on top of it, communicating with Public Works, and we're working diligently to get that cleaned up as soon as possible. Could is, it is an eyesore. And lastly, you have the July crime statistics in front of you, so unless you have any questions, that is all. I tried to make that quick.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Any questions from the community? Um, date, is it the twenty-seventh, Chief, or the twenty-sixth? This is Tuesday, seven days from now, or is it, is it a Wednesday, the twenty-seventh?
No, it is the twenty-sixth, I apologize.
It's Tuesday, a week from today. Got it, and that's six to nine, or six to eight?
Six, six to eight PM, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. Public Works Director, come in, wherever you are.
Yes, sir, I am here. So first off, thank you to Chief Alcaraz, I have to say kudos to the commander Garza and Code Enforcement. They've definitely been out documenting and submitting work orders for the graffiti. We have been trying to get right behind them and get it cleaned up, but I appreciate as well, Code Enforcement and the work that PD is doing to combat that never-ending issue that we're dealing with, so thank you to that. The other thing that I have is we've gone through and actually got all the boxes, the junction boxes, for the musco lights that are going in at Schaefer Park. Those have all been cleaned out to be able to clearly identify the wiring and circuitry that we need to do for the warranty that I've spoke of previously for that lighting system. The other thing that we have, obviously, is still the downtown project. Just so I can be clear to everybody, the public and council, to remind them that once we revise the actual plan and where the trees were going, we have a total of eight parking spaces that will be taken, not twelve, we went from twelve back to eight. There's three on the, on the west side of the street, or the side that the art center is on, and there is five that will be located on the east side of the road, where the two parking lots are located. So total of eight on those, we're moving forward with that, we will be shopping, continuing to shop for trees. I spoke with you, Mr. Mayor, previous to leaving for my trip that I'm on currently, in regards to possibly getting a council member or two that we could actually go out and put our eyes on some trees and try to lock down some prices. So looking to do that, hopefully, this next week. And we're continuing getting the trenching done to the location where the trees will actually be placed. And we're going to be starting the excavation of those holes, as well as removing the six inches of base rock that will be replaced with soil media and the planters where the trees are going in the parking spaces. So that's pretty much all I have to report. We're having some really good breakoff groups here at the annual PWX meeting. Today, we met with the SCSG group, which is small cities, small governments, men and women from all over the country that are in populations of fifty thousand or less. They're dealing with a lot of the same issues, funding, federal funding, state funding, programs at a state level and a local municipality level. So getting some good information to bring back to the city of Selma, and that's all I have.
That's great, thank you for joining us, and I know it's three hours later there. Director, I wanted to compliment Public Works on Rose and Orange. I really appreciate the speed bumps there, the traffic calming measures, the signs you put up slowing people down in front of Roosevelt, that is just really, really good stuff. Some people have commented on the squiggle lines, and that's the point, isn't it? To make people kind of pay attention there, just to slow the speed down. I mean, people, the crossing guards, take their lives in their hands there. I mean, some people just go barreling through there for, and they have for years. So thank you for that, appreciate Public Works taking the lead on that. Also, I want to say thank you to Public Works for, Brentlinger, seeing the sprinklers on, I'm seeing it's been seeded. You're making strides there, I think that's gonna pay off in the future. I think Caddyshack Go-Pers service went out there last week, aptly named. And again, the band, the, you know, our, our local football team, the Bandits, they've gone back out to Schaefer, I believe. But they will, they will become, you know, who knows, they may be coming back if we don't get those musco lights on in time. So again, thank you, thank you for that, thank you for your, your hard work on that. Look forward to those trees. I did have a question based on the community, having questions about the trees going in. One is, okay, you put the trees out in where the road used to be, what's to keep those roots from going out and going under the sidewalks again?
So the whole objective of moving the tree, so we've seen the damage, I'm sure that a lot of the citizens have seen right there on High Street, where we have brand-new sections of concrete, right up to the building from the back of the curb. That is a direct effect of, or reflection of having the trees planted in those cutouts in the sidewalk. By moving them out into the parking area in the street, you're number one, starting at an elevation at the surface, it's already six inches lower than the sidewalk elevation. And those trees are gonna be planted in a soil media, they're gonna have root barriers, the whole application of planting those trees, and then again, the species of tree that we're getting are more of a deep-rooted tree, not a shallow-rooted tree. Part of the problem that we have to understand is a lot of the areas where trees have been cut down, or we're currently having to cut trees down, we just had a place that was on the west of McCall on Chestnut, a tree that's in our parkway, a huge branch of it broke off, and it was getting ready to fall on one of the residents' houses. When those trees were planted fifty or sixty years ago, the engineers in the city that were planning and planning those developments were not necessarily thinking long-term, what, what are the effects? A lot of the infrastructure, like sidewalk, curb, and gutter made out of, even existed at the time. It might have just been edge of roadway, easement, or right-of-way that was identified to build the roads themselves. So, you know, those, those types of tree species and root, you know, is it shallow-rooted, is it deep-rooted? A lot of those things were not identified at that time. Now we're identifying those things, and all of those things are being considered when these types of projects are being put forward.
Again, the logic of putting the trees out where the parking spaces were, as opposed to just putting them back in those tree wells? Explain that again?
I, I can handle that one, Mayor, if, if I may, Mike. As part of the downtown strategic, part of the downtown improvements, including, included activating the sidewalk areas for maybe some businesses to go in there and have tables and chairs. Having the trees there kind of limits the entertainment area for a lot of businesses to have extra seating. So having the trees out in the, in the parking spaces, not only promotes better ADA access, but also promotes activation of a lot of the businesses in the downtown, to have added seating without the obstruction of the sidewalk for ADA.
Anything to add to that, Public Works Director?
No, well said.
Great, all right. Did anybody have any other questions for the Public Works Director? Okay, moving on to community services, Director Fletcher.
Yes, I have a few things to report on, so we are taking a lot of registrations right now. So we have our NFL Flock Football Program open, we have our Cheer Squad, our Spark Squad open, we have our five K Color Run registration open, and we plan on opening our Junior MBA Basketball Program that we're partnering with Selma High School. The both, the both the men's and women's basketball teams are gonna be joining us this winter to be able to provide a basketball league for our youth. And so with all that being said, we do plan on having two dates for in-person registrations after hours. And so the first one is scheduled for September twelfth, we'll be over at the Veterans Plaza here at Lincoln Park from five to about six-thirty. So we'll be posting that on our social medias and getting the word out through the parent square, through Selma Unified School District as well. So our youth can come out and their parents can come out and register their kids. We also did a calling for volunteers on our social medias today. So any, any student that needs volunteer hours, we have plenty of events coming up that we definitely need some extra hands, and students are our favorite. So if your child needs community service hours, whether it's for class, or, or just for, you know, their resume, or whatever it may be, there is a Google form on our social medias where they can sign up for events, and we'll contact them, and we'll put them to work. The other thing that we did last week was we actually recognized our senior volunteers at the Senior Center last week with a certificate. We give them, we gave them thank you for everything that they do at the Senior Center. We have a wonderful group of volunteers that are very hardworking and committed to our daily operations. And so we celebrated them last week. Also, at the Senior Center, they're going to Table Mountain Casino on September ninth. And that one, we do partner with MB Transportation, who gives us five-dollar transportation anywhere in Fresno County. So they will be going to Table Mountain for a few hours and then come back home. And then we have also booked a trip to Solving with the seniors. And so we will be going to Solving in October, and that is seventy-five dollars per person. They have the option of either going to the Chumash, Chumash Casino, or going into town. And so we are taking sign-ups for that at this time. Selma Live Two, we are running full force with that event. Will take place September twenty-sixth at Lincoln Park. I encourage the community to come on out and support the local vendors, listen to, listen to some good music, and participate in just a wonderful Friday afternoon outdoors. And then lastly, at the Selma Arts Center, Hades Town is currently playing right now. Tickets are on sale at the box office or at selmaartscenter.com. And then they do have a small little art display that is open to the public during their box office hours, which are Monday through Wednesday, one to five. And so the community is able to go into the Arts Center and see some local art from artist Andy Gonzalez and some other local artists that have provided pieces of artwork for, and that tie-in with Hades Town. And then my last thing is Finding Nemo, that is gonna be a really big show. I encourage the community to come on out and support the cool kids players. That opens September fourth, yes, that opens September fourth, so come on out to the Selma Arts Center, come see the kids. It'll be an adorable show. That's all for now, thank you.
Right, with that, we're going to take our five-minute break, where the members of the public can approach members of the department before they go home for the evening if they don't have any more business with the council. Five-minute break then, we'll be right back.
No. Well, operate.
Hi, thank you. Great, how are you?
Okay.
He wears a small face.
Extra small. Now, do they, 'cause that's the other thing OC wants.
I always hate it when people buy me T-shirts and they buy these idiot garbage, or they're gifts to the sixteen-year-old.
So I told my, the middle of our family, and it has a yard, and everything is good, and the house has been my way of life. But it seems, we don't wear it. So we go and give it away, but then they tell us, you know, we have the neighbors going to get our stuff, and they say, we don't. And my wife said, this time, so my wife wants a brand new set, I said, well, how many years you guys worked? Buy a new set. She goes, I'll buy a pair, she was like, two hundred bucks. But she's on the hunt right now, she says, if I can.
Is who he is.
No, no, you're in charge.
How are you doing, daddy?
A meal. Yes, meal.
Meal?
Yes.
Did she ever baby?
Our next item, which is new business, item four. Our first item tonight is consideration and action on Resolution 2025-76R, and that's adopting the City of Selma Parks Master Plan. Deputy City Manager.
Just waiting for my computer to boot up, it's, didn't get the five-minute break memo. Um, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Before you is, you know, the Parks Master Plan, which has been a project that has been going on for well over a year. There's been a lot of community outreach done with this, with this plan to garner community sentiment about our existing parks, along with identifying the needs for parking to meet our growth goals and, and general plan compliance. Our consultant, QK, is here to do a short presentation to kind of provide an overview of the contents of the Parks Master Plan. I know Community Services was heavily involved, Public Works was heavily involved, planning was heavily involved in the development and review of that plan. So with that, unless there's anybody else that wants to chime in, I'm gonna turn it over to Christine Chavez, unless your Community Services Director has anything else to add.
I can chime in, yeah, this has definitely been an ongoing project that, you know, we, we definitely have a lot of passion for. And so we're really excited for you guys to, to hopefully pass this tonight, and that way it guides us into the future. There's a lot of potential, a lot of possibility here within city limits for us to expand our programming and expand our green space. And so before you, again, is the Parks Master Plan, and we have Christine here from Quatna.
Great, thank you.
So much, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, I'm excited to be here tonight and present this work before you. I also wanted to mention the community was heavily involved, as well as your departments, and it's just been a pleasure working with the community. For introductions, I'm Christine Chavez, I'm a senior planner with QK, and then we have a whole row of QKers back there. They worked on it, maybe in part, in parts of the, in different parts of the project, but we're all here to support you guys. So skipping to. So skipping to the timeline, we started in March. Um, we did a number of workshops and just community outreach. Um, we had a community survey that went through, um, a couple of months and it was available through July, um, through the summer months. We did some pretty heavily, heavy marketing on that, um, had some good response rates. We had a public draft available in July and that was after we had presented it to the Selma Recreation Commission, who recommended it for your approval tonight. So what is a Parks Master Plan? A Parks Master Plan is a critical component of the development of future parks, trails, facilities, programs and services. Um, something that is consistent with the visions and policies for the City of Selma. This was something that the city wanted to make sure that the direction that they're heading is in line with what the future vision is for the community. And so this plan comprehensively evaluated all of the parks and infrastructure related to, um, trails, recreation and program needs for the next twenty years and beyond. Some of the goals for the master plan were identifying the community's needs and interests, increasing capacity to meet current and future needs. Um, you guys have a lot of population growth that'll be occurring in the near future and we wanted to make sure that was properly accommodated with, um, parkland. Creating a master plan that will successfully compete with other communities for funding opportunities, um, develop a definitive program for renovation of existing recreation facilities and development of future. Addressing accessibility issues and allowing all park visitors to access parks. Um, and developing a five, ten, twenty-year vision, um, roadmap for the development of parks in the city. So giving you guys a good, um, framework by which you frame your budgets and your, um, project, your priorities of projects. So first, we did an inventory of existing parks, um, and you'll see a list of the parks on the screen there. You have a total loop of forty-six point nine acres of parks. Um, there's ten acres planned at Thompson Park. And a class one trail along a canal. And then, um, Amberwood Parks Master Plan or Amberwood Master Plan, um, is calling for just about a hundred acres of open space at full development. So that will take a very long time to happen. So, um, that is the long-range plan, but we have a smaller number to deal with the interim. So understanding parks, um, we, QK came onsite, um, in the city and we toured every single park. Um, we evaluated the amenities and described each park's function. It's, um, you know, who's visiting it, what amenities they have and, um, had a very in-depth conversations with city staff and city, um, city recreation staff and city maintenance, maintenance staff. Um, we looked at who has access to parks, how many people were within a five, ten and fifteen-minute park? And there's, um, data and statistics that indicate the closer you live to a park, the more likely you are to visit it. And so when you look at the map there, it's a little hard to see on a screen, but within the plan, the dark green indicates you're within a five-minute walking distance. And so as you get lighter, um, green, shades of green, that indicates that, um, there's going to be a longer distance to walk to the park. And so that shows you how readily available parks are to given communities, um, within the city limits. So we wanted to see where, where, um, parks may be lacking within the community to make sure that we're planning appropriately. And, and then in the bottom corner, there's a classification of parks. So we wanted to see what size parks you have and what kind of, um, what kind of parks you'll need in the future. So, um, there's a variety of pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks, trailways and specialty parks. And they each serve a unique purpose and a unique, um, function. And so we wanted to make sure that you had a diverse, um, set of parks in the, in the community. And so that's your existing, um, park acreage. As I mentioned, we did extensive community outreach, um, we had stakeholder interviews. We had a community workshop, which was pretty well-attended. We did a community survey. Um, all three results indicated that most, the most used parks in Selma were Schaefer, Brettlinger, Ringo and Lincoln Park in that order. And the general feedback was that maintenance is doing a good job where they can, but there is a need for upgrading some of the facilities. So, um, restrooms were a big deal, um, that's something that a lot of people want to see improved at their parks. Parking is a bit of a concern at some of the parks. There's, um, a lot of you, um, recreationally, uh, youth sports, recreational sports that require parking and some, you know, a lot of parents come after work or, um, you know, one's doing drop-off. And so there's often more vehicles than needed. And they also wanted to be able to accommodate, you know, future, um, expansion of parks and the types of games that you're playing at the, at the fields. And then safety measures, whether it's the perception or the reality of the safety at the park, that is a concern from the community. So, um, where will Selma be in twenty years? We looked at the population as it exists today and then as projected by the Fresno County Growth Projections. And, um, it's currently at just over twenty-four thousand. And in twenty forty-five, which is the sunset date for this master plan, it's closer to thirty-three thousand. So that's about a nine-thousand-person increase. And we looked at what, um, park acreage was at a national, state and local level. And, um, there's a, a pretty in-depth analysis within the plan, but nationally, there's about ten acres per thousand residents. And in the state of California, it's somewhere between three to five. And the City of Selma's general plan indicates that it's a goal of five acres per thousand residents. Twenty-four thousand residents, um, you have one point nine one acres per thousand residents. Um, and so, and you have the ten acres planned. So you're, you're on your way to getting closer to the forty-six point nine acres. Or I'm sorry, you're at forty-six point nine, but you're getting closer to getting to your, um, appropriate ratio as indicated in the general plan.
That's a little alarming, correct? I mean, just by looking at the cities.
The Central Valley. That is because, and it seems as if because there's so much open space, we don't need, you know, we're not in New York City, for example, where you're just, you know, surrounded by high-rises. There's a lot more nature as you drive down the street, you're seeing greenery. And sometimes even just seeing greenery makes you a little more, you can feel like you're outdoor. And so it's not uncommon. I would say it's, um, about on average with the Central Valley, but it can definitely be increased. And because it's in your general plan at five acres, it's definitely a goal to set for yourself.
And we also, um, have another park planned for Rockwell Pond, a regional park of at least twenty-eight acres, be talking about that later. But, um, that will bring the, you know, the, the current park acreage to almost eighty acres. And so that'll bring the ratio to about, you know, three, three to one instead of where we are, one point nine one acres per one thousand. We'll have three acres per one thousand residents. So that, we're headed in the right direction on that. And it's definitely good to see these numbers because it, uh, keeps us honest and keeps us, uh, moving towards more, more parks for our city.
And, and if I could add something to Councilmember Garrett's concern about one point nine acres per thousand, um, with the, uh, adoption of the Quimby Act throughout the state that allows, you know, cities to require dedication of parkland as part of development or impact fees or, or what have you. The city historically has not required a lot of subdivisions to build park facilities. And so you have a lot of the older subdivisions in town that are just devoid of parks, likely because they were constructed before the Quimby Act as well. And so you have a lot of existing neighborhoods that we're having to go back and try and find park space to serve them or build large park facilities, ten acres in the oldest part of town, right? And so we're, we're going back and we're trying to address those concerns. But some of it's just a product, as Christine stated, Central Valley practice due to lack of, uh, Quimby Act requirement, implementation of proper impact fees, fair share allocation or just your ordinance doesn't require open space as part of development.
Councilman?
I, I have a question on these parks, you know, designs. You know, question is, I'm going to ask is, I'm sure it's going to be ADA compliance for people that are handicapped. And all the other issue, what, what type of trees are we going to plant in there as far as, are we going to space them out? Are we going to put some barbecue bits in there or how are we going to?
For facilities. Within the plan, there's a whole, um, there's a plant suggestion list. There's a layout suggestion list so that you're minimizing maintenance by putting them maybe on the perimeter or putting, you know, foliage really close to each other so that they're, um, easily maintained in a small area. They're not walking, you know, half a mile and then trimming a bush and then walking another, you know, quarter mile. So there's a lot of suggestions for improving efficiencies within the maintenance.
And on the other note, where are we going to locate these, uh, restrooms? Uh, to be next to the playground for kids, someplace, morally it is.
And this is going to be a very high, I should, I should have started out with that, I apologize. Those are great questions. This is a very high-level plan. We're not coming in and saying, build the park exactly as we say. We're saying, here's some, um, not best practices, but some, uh, common practices that you see, um, at parks. And you definitely want to involve the community. The community has excellent input. They're very passionate about their children, they're very passionate about the community. Um, you guys, some of you guys have attended some of the meetings and you guys just all have great suggestions. You have a community that's interested, that wants to make things better. So it's really just keeping them engaged, um, asking them what they think works best for their pocket park, their neighborhood park. Um, we wouldn't recommend putting restrooms in every park because that maintenance is very costly. But where you do put restrooms, just make sure that you're strategic with, um, asking the community if that makes sense for them because they're, they're going to be able to tell you they're the ones using the park. And so, um, our recommendation is that you keep the community engaged and, um, these are just conceptual plans. They're not actual, you know, go on, build it. And so, um, we really want to make sure that you guys have the best options to include in your, um, future plans, once you have the funding secured.
And, and on the, on the other note, I, I considered like Pioneer Village, that's another part that we could utilize that as for events, you know? You know, pioneers, I consider it a part, Pioneer.
I think as part of the plan, we called it a special use facility. And so we kind of took Pioneer Village because it is kind of outside the traditional parks at a park master plan, which is why staff and council adopted the Pioneer Village Master Plan for more of like entertainment and a build out of that facility right over three phases to build amphitheater, install restrooms, additional parking and things of that nature. So we've treated Pioneer Village as an event facility, but as part of this plan, it is not necessarily a park facility.
A hybrid, definitely.
But it is not included in the acreage calculation. So, I mean, the city changes things, you can totally include it and it increases your acreage right automatically.
The ratio of people to park acres, we're good.
So planning for parks, um, the next slide we did provides some, some average maintenance costs for, um, parks that you do, and you do make improvements to. So, you know, if you're adding in a pocket park, you're like, oh, we'll just add it, you know? You have to think about the maintenance cost. You don't want to go around just putting in parks and not have the ability to maintain them or have a plan to do so. And again, all of the questions that you asked, those are great questions to ask as to who's going to maintain that. You know, how long is that going to take? And your maintenance guys are really great at that. We have, um, they've already started implementing some of the improvements. I heard, you know, the compliments earlier to, um, some of the landscaping improvements. And so we want to just keep that up and keep that motivated, um, because you're going to continue to see improvements as, um, processes get more streamlined and just are repetitive. So we have some costs by park type that, um, will give you an estimate of what that will cost once you add a new park. And then, um, as Jerome mentioned, there are, um, park fees that occur when you have new developments come in. They will pay the city or dedicate parkland depending on the agreement. Um, grants can also be awarded to help pay for parks. Um, those are one-time improvement costs, but you can always, you know, you always want to make sure that you have the maintenance to do that. Um, the free car is great, but who's paying for the gas? Who's paying for, you know, the upkeep? Um, development fees and local revenues will help bridge the gap in funding. So as long as you have a plan for improving parks, as you get that money, you can start saving it up and saying, okay, we're ready for, you know, Rockwell Pond or whatever other project you have lined up. Um, and then the city must determine sustainable ways to pay for operations and improvements to existing parks. Um, the staff, um, the community really wants to see more park space, but the city really needs to be strategic in when you expand park space that you have the ability to maintain it. Cause you don't want to go without the maintenance of our existing parks of Selma's existing parks and, um, add more to that workload. So, you know, definitely, and you guys are pretty strategic in how you do that, but just, um, it's, it's pointed out within the plan.
And if I could add to that point, Christine, sorry for jumping in again. Um, with new development, we've talked about dedication of park facilities, but also the maintenance of those park facilities as part of the CFD for that subdivision, right? So if there's a park and you guys will have a, a final map and CFD assessment coming before you in the coming weeks, the park facility as part of that subdivision is paid for by the residents using that park, right? So there'll be an assessment for various services and one of those is park maintenance. So development pays for itself, whether it's through impact fees or ongoing assessment for maintenance of their facilities.
Then, um, just as comparison, we also did, uh, staffing level comparisons. So planning for parks, uh, the diagram on the left, um, shows some of the available city-owned properties that you can potentially convert to parks if, um, feasible. You know, you'd have to look at that in detail, but it's a few ponding basins. You'll see, um, item ten at the top left and the bottom, um, potential regional parks. Um, and then you've got Thompson Park in there and then the, um, trail running through, running along the canal through the city. Have a lot of spaces for parks and it is an ability to take existing land that's maybe undeveloped um, in the middle of the city and throw in a walking trail. I know walking trails were really popular with the community. They want somewhere safe they can walk that's lit. Um, they, they go and exercise in Central Valley, you know, we have one of the highest OBCD rates in the, the nation. And so providing that outdoor opportunity for families to go out and exercise or watch sports and go walk around, um, Schaefer Park. You know, people were really interested in seeing that. So you guys have the opportunity to make that happen and here's some suggestions for locations. Um, additional items that we recommended, um, within the plan are guidelines and standards. So ADA improvements, like you touched on, um, guidelines by classification of park or amenity, um, existing park improvements that are needed. It's a, it's a pretty comprehensive document, also includes maintenance and operation improvements, staff procedures and efficiencies, uh, future park development recommend, um, future park development recommendations. And then special facility suggestions. And that one was quite unique, but this is really an opportunity to, to partner within your community. So you can have a sharing of school facilities, you have a lot of school districts, some of them are directly adjacent to parks, where you can maybe enter into an agreement, a shared use agreement, where after hours, you know, maybe they have to add a new fence to that there's not access to the classrooms, but you have additional fields that they maintain. You guys can enter into a shared agreement and use those for recreational events, um, scheduled recreational events or, um, practices or whatever. Right now, you have some leagues that are going out and, um, organizing that on their own, they're directly approaching the school district and saying, hey, can I practice there on Mondays? You know, with my team. And so that does allow for a little, um, extra, you know, uh, it levels the playing field for all the teams, I guess is a nice way to say that. So, um, there is somebody on the Recreation Commission from the school district, so it's a good opportunity to strike up, strike up that conversation. Um, that was, that was very well received at that commission meeting as well. So highly recommend that. And then, um, community-specific facility development, that's kind of along the lines of Pioneer Village and just including that within the park, um, scheme of things. So planning for parks, this is one of the diagrams that I mentioned, um, for creating efficiencies and maintenance. So you don't have small little slivers of turf where you're, um, you know, right along the sidewalk mowing grass, you have just like big turf areas. But the other things are like drought tolerant plants that are easy to trim and easy for staff to just kind of go around and, and trim ease, um, in one go and they're not having to spend all day trimming up one park weekly. So that's the diagram there. And then, um, just suggestions for continuing to plan parks. So once you have the funding to, um, create a new park or you want to start prioritizing which parks you start working towards. Keeping the community engaged, they have great suggestions and ideas. Um, they're very passionate and, um, you have a lot of, um, youth sports in the community that want to remain in Selma and want to grow talent within Selma. So we also want to, um, have you creating guidelines and standards based on the recommendations for maintenance and operations, staff procedures and efficiencies. Excuse me. And then park acquisition guidelines, we have some suggestions for what kind of land you do or don't buy to make sure that it's not something that you're, you know, kind of wasting some money on and it's a feasible project. And then funding opportunities at the state and federal level. Financing districts like Jerome, Jerome was just mentioning, impact fees and dedications, keeping those up to date so that they keep up with the times. Thank you. And then, um, community group and non-traditional type of funding. So that concludes my presentation.
Great.
Happy to take any questions, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. Very thought provoking, very, uh, timely as we are moving forward with the expansion of parks here. Both on sort of a micro and a macro level with the smaller park, that 10 acre one we talked about. And also the one, the regional one that's really exciting that we're, that we're, that we're planning for. And it's also well worth noting that other land can be repurposed too. I mean, I remember when the council took a field trip out to the Sun Maid area that's up for sale right now. And it's very expensive. But I mean, it is a huge area that could be used for a great community center, up to and including parkland. But it's that kind of creative thinking that I think, uh, something like this really keeps us thinking about and puts us in that, um, that, that framework. Um, if you looked at our last council meeting, um, we also had a presentation from this company called Placer AI. And it's about getting data about where people go, you know, and, and where they wanted, you know, what they want to do and what they visit in Selma. And one of the ve- very interesting statistics was the people who leave Selma, they don't, they don't go to parks. Interestingly, they go to River Park. It's called a park, but they go to River Park. So it's, it's a mall and people still like shopping malls and retail, which I found very interesting. And it's counter to what we're being told a lot by others. But people still want that experience and people still want parks too. They still want to go outside. Not everybody sits inside. And, uh, just, you know, plays with their cell phone. They, they, people do really want to have that outside experience. And I'm looking forward to seeing where people go with this, this new tech tool that the city has at Placer AI in terms of which parks they visit and what they go see. Um, hopefully we can get some, some statistics on that. Did council have any questions before we go to the public? Um, any input on our, on the parks master plan? Anybody online or on the phone with comment about this great presentation by Quadnaff?
I see no hands raised online.
Thank you for that. With that, we, this is a action item. So, um, this is for consideration and action on adopting the city of Selma Parks Master Plan. Is there a motion to approve item four one?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes.
Councilman Osagera?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. And before we move on, quick, quick point. We have this Golden State Corridor Plan. It was, um, a Measure C funded plan. Uh, $43 million, uh, making the road better on the old 99 from Fowler through Selma to Kingsburg. And our stretch of the road, for whatever reason, includes a whole bunch of trees. I mean, tree after tree, after tree, after tree. And they're like really close to each other. My question, and this is sort of rhetorical at this point, but could we take some of those trees and maybe replant them in our future park space? It's ours, right? It's the city's. I mean, it's, once it's planted and put to its intended use, it is city property.
I, I can answer that question, Mr. Mayor. This is Director Hahn. Um, so we, from the very beginning, when the plan check happened with Gateway, the previous, uh, park maintenance lead got to look and review those plans. They actually asked for about half of the trees that are currently there. Um, how that got through and they planted them where they did, we've already had that discussion from when the city first assumed responsibility after the 120 day gestation period for all of the planting and the work that was done in the median. So we are currently looking at removing before they get to a point where we would kill them or it would be too costly or cost prohibited, so to speak. Um, to remove those and for areas around some of the parks that we can actually start planning some of those plants. So that's a discussion that's been happening with Public Works. It's just having the manpower and prioritizing that. But um, we just spoke as recently as two weeks ago when the city staff was out there. I'm sure a lot of the public saw them. They were actually doing the maintenance in that center island. And we discussed it again at that point. So we are still looking at that and that is more than likely what's going to happen. We're going to probably take like every other one. But again, we need to have a place to plant them where they'll just stay properly and they'll be a benefit, not something we're going to have to cut down in the future.
Great. Thanks for your comment.
And if I could also add, I wanted to thank, uh, QK for the completion and, and, uh, working this plan through the process. They are also working on multiple other master plans that are under the engineering contract. Uh, in addition to the Yamabian Horn City Engineer Contract, right? So when you see the invoices come across on the check register for QK, this is one of the projects that they're working on. They're also working on the storm drain master plan. They're also working on the circulation master plan as well as the broadband master plan. So we are working and so when, I just want to make sure you guys put the face with what you guys see on the check register in terms of this is the type of product that we get when we have multiple consultants able to complete work in a timely manner and, uh, professional quality as well.
Always excited about plans, but we're even more excited about how we use the plans and moving on from there. But we realize it starts with the plan. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity.
Right. Next item is we're moving through item four two. We tabled that. We're going to go to four three, which is consideration necessary action on resolution approving and authorizing execution of second amendment to the contract for provision of solid waste handling services between the city and Mid Valley Disposal, Inc.
Mayor members of the council, Mid Valley Disposal was asked to conduct, uh, two annual drop off events per year, each one lasting three days. Uh, and that, uh, provision was not in their contract. So in negotiating that, uh, item with, uh, Mid Valley, Mid Valley, uh, proposed to perform that service for free. And in exchange requested an extension of the term of the contract. So the proposed amendment that is before you that has been approved by Mid Valley uh, disposal simply provides that they will provide the, uh, semi-annual drop off event service. And in exchange, we are extending the contract by three years so that it is, uh, it will terminate on uh, 2034 instead of 2031. There was a provision in the original contract that allowed an option for one year extension to Mid Valley Disposal. We have retained uh, that, um, that provision. Uh, so if they exercise the option, it would extend to 2035.
Got it.
It, it, it basically is going from a, a seven year contract to a 10 year contract with the potential for that one year extension.
The 10 year term is what the city has traditionally had with most waste haulers. Is that correct? To your knowledge?
It's my understanding and I'm, I'm well versed on their contract because I'm currently preparing the uh, respondents brief on the CAGLIA appeal. So I had to go through all of that the other day. Uh, but yeah, they, they, you, I think you had actually approved a 10 year contract. And then in negotiation with the, uh, staff, that got whittled down to seven.
My question is, on the contract itself, there was a two year period when there could be no price increase starting July 1, 2024 to July 1, 2026. And then after that, there is the option for Mid Valley to increase the prices. In addition to the cola that they automatically get, but I don't think they've been taking for a couple of years. Um, so the rates have stayed flat for, for two years. My question is, does this affect that provision at all? Or does in 2026, does the, does that period go away and the rates can change?
It, it, it does not affect that provision at all. Uh, the, the two year grace period before they start kicking it in.
Good way of putting it.
stays in place.
Stays in place. And then that, the, does that, Mr. Klapkov, the president owner of Mid Valley, um, does that extend the grace period by two years? Or does that end next year as well? Cause we'd, we'd rather the grace period extends another two years as well.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff, Joseph Kalpikoff, President, uh, Mid Valley Disposal. Another two year, we call it a rate lock was effective, um, July 1st, uh, 24th through, um, June 30th of 26. Um, and from there, moving forward in 26 to, to 27, it'll be a cola only. Um, based upon the CPI and there's not anything additional, uh, except for a cola. Um, anything above and beyond that would must be triggered through a, a special circumstance or something and would come back to council for your approval at that point.
And then, and in 27, is it still a cola or is there an option?
It's a cola throughout.
All the rest of the contract term?
That is correct.
Unless some sort of special issue happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're confident with the cola that we're fine.
So since you're up there, and by the way, thank you so much for working with the city on the, um, the, the big, the big item was of course the curbside pickup, you know, that we started with and we have worked with, with the city, the people and Mid Valley. We're back to alley pickup again for the majority of those who had alley pickup before. Thank you for working with us on that. And, um, if you saw from the last meeting, um, the grant, there are some grants for paving some alleys. So hopefully we'll be able to get some of those alleys in shape around the middle of the city so that we can put, we can go back to alley pickup there too. But, but we'll see after, after those alleys are repaved.
Uh, thank you. And I, I, I can't stand up here and say, uh, thank you to, uh, Jerome and, and Mike, whoever he is, if you're still on, on for their.
His voice just comes out of.
For their assistance and.
I, I am here. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
With those maps in the alleys, um, again, it was a collaborative effort and we, we appreciate that, that support.
Well, I have one question in regards to the, um, cleanup.
Yeah.
Would that be in Selma or is it going to be in Kingsford?
No, it's going to be in Selma and, and, and though this first site, I, I can get Isaac or, or Mike can detail the, the first year. We have, I don't, I'll screw it up. I don't want to do that. I'm going to let Isaac Kulakoff, uh, our operations director come up here. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
So you don't just cook burgers and hot dogs at Public Works event?
I was a good biggers that night. Um, so we've got a site on Floral and Whitson. We've discussed, um, with city staff, um, it's a city owned property. Um, and it's a, it's a fantastic, I think it's almost five, five acres, six acres. Um, it has good ingress and egress for traffic.
Where, where's this again?
Floral and Whitson, I want to say. Am I, am I?
I, I think you're, is it the Nelson and McCall property?
Yeah, thank you. Nelson and McCall. I apologize. Uh, south of the state foods or that, that market there.
Aren't we saying that area?
Yeah, Nelson and McCall.
Nelson and McCall is, has the, has the traffic been considered for that area? Because the traffic does build up.
Yeah. So coming off of Nelson, um, uh, the McCall area, you can have an inbound outbound um, progression of cars. Um, we don't typically have more than 20 to 25 cars in line at a time. I know you were out at our last cleanup and we moved traffic through pretty well. So we're able to snake through the public, through that large area and keep traffic off of, uh, either direction they're coming from, um, inbound and outbound. Um, we walked the, the facility with Public Works Director. Um, and Ulysses, his, his number two, uh, Michael Hans number two, um, about three weeks ago. Um, and so it's a, it's an outstanding spot, um, going forward, additional spots that, that may get proposed. You know, we've proposed having it at our facility. I know that's not something that's, that's been great. We did have it at, um, Selma Unified on that Saturday, which is not a bad spot. But if you're having a three day event that Thursday, Friday, the congestion of traffic with school buses coming in and out on that, that would be the, the, the east side of the facility. Um, is just unsafe and, and it's not something that we can do during the week. On a weekend, a one day event on a Saturday, it's a, it's a great spot.
Did that there the last time and it was, I think just a Saturday.
It was just a Saturday. It worked great. Nobody's there. You're able to have, you know, if you get hit with 500 vehicles, we typically prepare for about 10% of the homes. So 500 cars is, is what you're going to get. Um, we haven't broken 275 yet. But I think that this thing's just gaining traction. And once it does and it marketed and advertised, you'll have close to 500 vehicles.
Word to the wise, there'll be a for sale sign there where you're going, because we are selling that land. So, uh, be a good, good piece of land for now, but we definitely want to keep,
For now.
Keep our eyes open for the future, whether it's in front of Pioneer Village or back to the schoolyard or something like that. Right?
But the cleanup will be.
But the idea is it's going to be in Selma for three days.
Yes, sir.
A week. And is that going to be October and April?
Current date is locked in for October 25th. So the Thursday, Friday proceeding, 23rd, 24th. Um, we'll have a flyer drafted for the city, um, that can be distributed, uh, listing dates, times, what you can bring, what you can't bring, what you need to be there, uh, so on and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Anybody from the public? Want to weigh in?
He said the end of October, um, that last Saturday in October is our parade. So that on a Saturday, trying to get people to that north end of town. When there's the parade and all the people downtown, I think that might be a, a problem. Uh, the band parade is always on this last Saturday of the month. Yes.
Right. The band festival.
That's a great point. It's, it's a tentative date that's locked in.
Maybe, maybe the week before.
There's a couple other options. Um, we just scheduled, you know, 16 other cities for the fall. So I, I'll get on that right away to look what options we do have. But that's a good point on that Saturday. You're going to be really, really.
Right. And I, if I could, if I could chime in real quick, I, I apologize. I did not consider that date as the parade day either.
Mike picked the date.
Yeah. Hey, I'll take it, man. I did not think about that. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention and I'll be speaking with Isaac tomorrow morning regarding this.
Okay.
And the other thing that I don't know if the trash company can do that or the city can advertise more about the big item pickup. I've seen myself in a couple of different places in town where people have left couches on the side of the road and things like that. And I don't know that they know that they have two free big pickups. All they have to do is call and schedule it. And I try, you know, when people, there's a lot of junk pickup people that advertise on, um, Facebook and they'll say, you know, how much will you charge me to come and pick up a couch? And I try to stick something in there about the trash company doing it for free. But I don't see a lot of advertisement about that to the community. And so I don't know if the trash company can get that out, word out better to, to, to save the eyesore of people leaving things on the side of their house or in the alleyways or wherever, because I, I've noticed it.
If I, if I could jump in real quick on that, um, so one, I'd like to say that the, the homeowners are absolutely allowed twice a year to call Mid Valley. They'll come do a large item pickup. From public work standpoint, a lot of that, we get notification from code enforcement. I think that unfortunately a lot of the couches and the items we're seeing just miscellaneously dumped in certain areas of town are illicit dumping from people that do not live within the city limits of Selma. So I think a lot of that is actually coming from outside of the area residents. Um, but I'll let Isaac go ahead and speak to that.
I just wanted to say it's, it's an active program. We do in Q2, we did close to 60 bulky item pickups in, in the city of Selma. So that's over a three month span, but people are using the, the service and, you know, yeah, you call in. You set it up. We create a work order the next day or so. We try to get it as soon as possible. Um, we pick it up, we take it away.
How, how does it work with the city? If we give Mid Valley a call, do you charge us or do we get two bulky items? As a city or how does that work with us, the city and our relationship with Mid Valley?
Yeah. You, you, so Public Works has open top, big industrial containers.
They go pick it up.
All city facilities around have, uh, uh, gratis, free front load services at parks, fire stations, et cetera, all over the place. But if Mike calls me and needs something removed, I usually just go take care of it.
Yeah, we, uh, we hired, if you came to the last meeting, I keep saying that, don't I? The last council meeting and no one did. Um, you know, we, uh, we hired a public information officer. So we're going to have more of a social media presence. Maybe we can do a better job of advertising for the two bulky item pickups for Mid Valley too.
Put something on the monument sign, um, out there off of Floral that. Put something on the monument sign, um, out there off of floral that, that hits at the, at the light.
Yep.
Um, but again, it is a, it's on our website too. The city of Sel- the city of Selma has their own page on our website. Mid Valley Disposal, disposal dot com forward slash Selma, and all those services are listed on there and it just links you directly to it.
Good to know. Thanks. Any, anybody else with a comment?
Stalder and Maris, Selma, California. Um, okay, so the drop off would be at the end of October. They're at the lot on McCall, right? McCall and Nelson. Okay. It's, I think finding it somewhere, finding, you know, a better location would be better. Because I'm thinking about all the dirt, the five hundred vehicles driving in and out, the dust. We got the, what is it? The, uh, mobile, the elderly right behind there, people with asthma. Um, now if it rains, nothing but mud, like it was last time that we went over on behind transportation. It was pretty, you know. Muddy and because it rained. So I think a better location than it, it is also a nice orb because we got the, uh, band festival coming up. We also have a Tejano Festival coming up, people driving in from Parlier, and there it is, you know, all the trash. So I don't think that's gonna work. Two, um, you said three days of drop off. What time would these, you know, would it be? During like from, is it from seven to four? Is it half day? So I would want to know the days. And also the raise on the cola, what percentage? How much is it going to be raised? So those are some questions and comments that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Joe, I can answer your first two questions. The first two questions, Mr. Mayor, uh, as to the dust. The meeting that Public Works had onsite with Mid Valley. We discussed not only ingress and egress to keep people from driving out when they're leaving onto McCall, which is a busy street, leaving a stop sign. And coming out onto Nelson, but we also discussed dust control. We will have a water truck onsite that will be doing dust control. As far as tracking any dirt or any track out, we'll be following the current sweaty or SW PPP regulations. That are mandated by the state of California. We will have strike off plates or rumble plates that the cars will drive over to knock the dirt off of their tires. Before they enter the road, staff will be there to sweep that up. Um, as to the second question, I can promise you that we, you, when the event is completed, you will not even be able to tell that we were there. Except for seeing, uh, just track marks from where the vehicles may be traveled. There won't be any left debris. Um, there definitely won't, because now we're aware of the event for the band parade being on that same weekend. Like I said, I will be discussing the options for other dates with, uh, Isaac. And operations tomorrow morning and we'll be picking a different date, but we definitely won't be having debris. Laying on that lot or being an eyesore nuisance, so to speak, to the public when we do that event. As far as the colas, that I'll leave that to Joseph or Isaac.
So regarding the colas, we don't set the, the percentage for the colas. It is a statewide, um, cola that's set. And if I can speak on for the, for twenty twenty-four, the colas that we implemented. Two point four six percent was that was the, was the, the, the cola for all of our cities. It was, it was the same. Um, historically it was, it was a little bit higher during COVID because of, because the inflation. We actually envision it, uh, our projections have it going down to about two and high one point nines to twos, uh, next year as well.
Let's hope.
So, well, then that's, that's the, I mean, it's, we don't set it. It's set by the state, um, and it's a standard, uh, cola that we have in most of our agreements.
Hey, um, Brian Ramirez, um, I agree about being on a busy, um, intersection. Um, when we had, when we went last time, when Waste Management was our hauler, they had it at Selma Disponable Recycling. Over on Golden State and Dockery, where it was away from town, a lot cleaner. It was on cement, um, away from town. So I don't know who owns that or what that's about, but maybe we can have it there. Maybe they can collaborate with them as well. And also to, um, piggyback off what Miss Sella said, um, in Fresno, they have, where they just put their trash out, like whatever they don't want. And I believe the hauler comes and takes it. So instead of maybe calling, maybe they, the homeowners can put out whatever they don't want. And then the drivers come, they, you know, they're doing the truck and, you know, they can mark off maybe they're, that's their second strike, the first strike, whatever. Rather than just calling, maybe that'll be less of, you know, um, something to deal with. Um, so yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Jason, Dineuba Avenue. I have a question. I live in the Mobile Home Park there. And, um, the trash trucks, trucks don't come and pick up my trash. People from the Mobile Home Park pick up our trash. So if I call you folks and say I have a couch. Do they let your trucks come in? Because I heard they didn't want your big old trucks on their precious road. Thank you.
Their precious road.
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street, Rose Robertson. I just want to, um, say that I know we used to get five days a week and I, I know they're working with us. And three's, you know, hopefully, um, people will be good with that. So hopefully Saturday will be maybe, you know, the full hours. The eight to at least four or just like a full day, because I could just show you all my messengers every year twice. I get tons of people wanting to know, you know, I, I, I just, I just get it completely, um, constantly from the citizens. So I want to be able to give them some good news and, you know, that'd be great. Um, I appreciate, you know. Being able to work together now with our citizens. And another thing, I, I, I want to really give a shout out to Rachel. She, she was just outstanding, working with us, you know, getting calls from, from citizens and. You know, getting on top of it, just calling her and, and, and being able to just give her the message and she just would tell me, just send it to her. And, and, and I would get a response from the citizens and say she took care of me. So I, I, I just really want to do that. A shout out to Rachel and thank you. It took a lot of. Time off of me to do my work and other things. So I, I really, really appreciate that. So. Um, again, thank you for working with us. I appreciate it that we could come together and start doing things for the citizens as well and, um. Um, this is a positive thing. So thank you.
Good evening, Harvey Singh at seven, four, two, five East Dineuba Avenue here in Selma, but across the freeway. First of all, I wanted to give out a shout out to this, uh, new service provider. I know they came and helped us. In fact, they helped us for everything over there at the festival when we had it in April. And I don't think we got a chance to publicly thank them. And then when I heard that name, I said, wait a minute, that's the name that was the one main cog who helped us. Happens to, I think be a friend of Paul Sahora. Somehow Paul Sahora and him have some kind of relationship and because of that relationship, they stepped up. That's marvelous. They don't know us and we don't know them, but because of one guy and they donated all that. So if nothing else, God bless them for that and we thank them. I wanted to make sure we got a public acknowledgement to them, although we should have done more if, and I apologize for the delay. Acknowledgement, but I wanted to thank them. Second thing I wasn't quite understanding, but to the, to my. Way of thinking, I think you have some trash pickup dates that you provide for the general public in the city to put their trash out. Is that what I understand this?
That's the normal way we've done it for years in Selma.
I can't make any promises because I'm just one man up here, but if push come to shove, all else fail. We certainly have a big parking lot. It's grass parking lot. And if they need a space or something like that. As long as it's not stinky and smelly stuff on the weekends, we can probably accommodate them. We'll just have to work with our.
Bulky item.
Bulky item. We can deal with that. We'll just have them work with our sprinklers. I'll be careful with our sprinklers on that.
This is at the Gerdwata on forty-three.
The north part on Rose. It's away from the city. It's away from your band festival. It's away from all the other. So-called activities. It's close to ninety-nine, especially for what they did for us and for the amount of money they saved us. I will talk to them. I don't promise anything. And remember I said that I will talk to you and I will. And they've got the attorneys who are listening to me, but we, if then if push come to shove, if all else fail, we'll step up to the plate with them to the assembly.
Sounds great. Another candidate location then.
Thank you.
Especially after the city, uh, sells that piece of land. We hope is soon. Great, okay, anybody else?
Uh, Councilman Ramalos, I've got one comment that you were supposed to ask me up here regarding the county's hazardous. Household hazardous waste drop off, um, for the spring event. I need. Real quick, the, the city of Selma and the other cities of Fresno County, I have an MOU with the county of Fresno. I happen to chair it, um, and money that gets paid into the landfill where your trash goes, there's a portion of that money that goes back to the committee I sit on. That committee is in charge of household hazardous waste, paint, um, pesticides, batteries, um, things of that, things that don't go in the garbage bin. Part of the city of Selma, you do pay into, uh, a, a fund that we built a permanent facility in the Fresno County. That permanent facility was built three years ago. Part of that facility, we have a mobile collection vehicle. That goes out into communities that are rural that are not located within the city of Fresno. I do, personally don't represent the city of Selma on that call, but I represent the, I'm the chair of the MOU committee. So I think would be nice to get direction from the city council to have the MOU committee pick. The spring cleanup event where Mid Valley does the drop off and have the county piggyback on that event and have a household hazardous waste. During that, um, that location. It takes coordination with the county and the cities to pick a date in advance. So the county can come out and have a, a household hazardous waste event the same day we do our cleanup event. So. Residents can come to one spot, throw away a couch and then, and then maybe get rid of a paint, uh, a five gallon paint can, some old pesticide. That they may have in the garage, some fluorescent tubes that may have in the garage. Um, but again, it, it takes some, it takes a time to get. On the county's schedule, um, so.
I, do, do they have this in every city?
They, they have four events a year and they're planned out in September, October, November for twenty-six. I want to go back to the committee at my next meeting and say we have, we have a request from Selma. Our spring cleanup to piggyback and HH event.
That would allow our residents as well as other resident, other residents from the county to come with hazardous things like paint and freon. Their refrigerator doors and things like.
Advertised in Selma, though, yes.
But other people could come.
Could come.
It might increase the numbers that would come to the, the collection day.
One of the things we're looking for is more participation and I, and, and for our events when we set up a huge, a huge van with, with.
Would council be good with, um, asking Mr. Kalpikoff to take this to his committee, the next in Asbury, Selma. Location in twenty twenty-six. Is there, um, it would have to be like October or April because those are the only days we have it.
Absolutely. We get them in advance. We'll pick, we'll pick our date in advance and this, they can schedule on.
To coincide with the October or April. Okay. Is council good with that?
It's a win, it's a win situation.
Yeah, it would increase the type of items the residents can bring. Real quick question, um, Joe, um. So I'm a landlord and I have twenty tenants. You know where this is coming from. And, and, uh, I want to bring my trash pickup and I'm, I say I'm bringing it for my tenants. Can I bring multiple loads as the landlord from my apartment building? I just want to get this out in front because I know I'm gonna get a call, um, or is it? You have to be the tenant. You have to show a license. I live there or some sort of ident, a utility bill.
Utility bill that shows you have X, Y, X amount of tenants on a utility bill, uh, well, yeah, yeah. As long as there's proof that, that you are the landlord of that property and you're doing the cleanup for them, then.
For five units and you can bring five times as much or five trips.
Since, on another note, uh, Joseph, you, you made a good point there, Scott. On the end of note, a lot of times he, the landlord. Will rent up, I mean, rent the facility, but they have to provide their own trash. At times they'll pay for their own trash.
Oh, okay.
You know, um.
The, these are community clean events. They're here to clean up the community. That's our goal. Our goal is to have these three day events within your community. So people can get rid of extra trash. That's where the garbage man, that's our job. As long as it's not a, a contractor paying, you know, paying. Or getting paid to do it throughout the city. Um, and if it's a, if it's a, if it's a utility bill with their name on it and they, hey, I've got a couple units. I'm, I'm bringing a couple loads. Our job is to take that.
Got it.
Okay.
Good, no, thanks. This is.
I have a. I have a comment.
Please.
Um, I just want to know, who is this Rachel woman?
I'd like to introduce my, our governor affairs, uh, Rachel Garza.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Mayor, members of the council, Rachel Garza Patlin, government relations for Mid Valley Disposal. Very nice to meet you all.
You know, um. I'll, I'll share a, a short story, how I met Rachel. I got a call out of the blue from some lady named Rachel. And she goes, hey, uh, I'm with Mid Valley. She goes, you want to meet for lunch? I want to talk to you about something. And so we meet and she goes, you know, your, you know, your alley problem? I'm solving it for you. It's gonna happen. And right after that, it just took off and we're where we're at. So thank you.
Thank you.
I, um, on another note, um. I'm, I, I appreciate Joseph, the owner coming to the council. And, and get up there and addressing some issues, you know, to the council on the cleanup and everything and, and, uh. And fixing some issues that in the past they weren't addressed. And I, and I thank you, uh, Joseph for, um, addressing the issues that the council had concerns. And, you know, from alley pickup situation that took place and you, you stepped to the plate and rectified them. And, uh, and I, and I appreciate we, the, the open dialogue, uh, was very good communication. And I thank you for that, Joseph.
Yeah, and thanks to our, um, two council members for going out and, um, working with Mid Valley. Thanks you guys for meeting with them. And hashing this out and our ad hoc committee bringing us back to the council. But you guys really did the, the hard work on this. And thanks for, for working with us as a, as a city. This is an action item. So is there a motion to approve this resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-eight R? Second?
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Council member Osagara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Council member Avalos.
Yes.
Council member Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. And since we're on the topic of the corner of McCall and Nelson, our next action item is consideration and necessary action. On resolution, thanks you guys. Um, twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine R approving vacant real estate listing agreement offering five point zero three acres. At the northeast corner of McCall and Nelson Boulevard for, for sale through RE/MAX Gold at a stated price.
Mayor, members of the council, this is the listing agreement that will, uh, enable the broker that we retain, which is, uh, Gurnick Nagwa. Who operates as RE/MAX Gold to list and hopefully sell. The vacant property that the city owns at McCall and Nelson, which is approximately five acres. Uh, the listing price is, uh, in the agreement, it, it is listed at two million dollars. The listing agreement is for a one year term. There is a. Uh, loosely defined commission in there of three percent. But in California, you're not allowed to set the commission, uh, for an actual sale until that sale occurs. And you've got a buyer's broker that, that agrees to it. And in California, as you can see from the agreement, we're asking you to approve. All agreements that have anything to do with a real estate transaction in California. The state prescribes the precise terms of those agreements. And they're, they're very, very detailed because you're required to make all these various disclosures and stuff about the property. So that is what that is and, um. Uh, we're, we're simply recommending that you approve this and let us, uh. List the property for sale and hopefully get it sold.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the city attorney?
No, I, I think it's kind of a, thank you for Neil for clarifying the, those requirements by the state of California. You can't get around, you can't get around those rules. I, I respect that. It, it lays it out, Scott, the way we want to get, we want. It lays it out, Scott, the way we want to get, we want to liquidate the property to develop our assets for our city. So.
Right, that money will go back in the general fund.
Yeah.
We get for hopefully selling this. Anybody from the public with a comment on this?
Teresa Salas, when did we purchase the property and how much was it purchased for?
I believe it was purchased last year, two years ago for a purchase price of one and a half million dollars.
It, it was, the purchase agreement was approved by council in 2023. We didn't close on the property due to various issues with the seller and the escrow company until 2024 for about 1.5 million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
On that, I remember very clearly they're stating when they purchased that property. You have a council member that's constantly saying he's here for the contingent, you know, for the people and he watches the money. But I do remember very clearly, there is no appraisal on that when they purchased it, if I'm correct. Was that correct? And that, if I also remember, that was a 3-2 vote when, when that happened.
I believe it was a 3-2 vote.
It was a 3-2 vote.
Ops or something like that.
Let me ask the question again. Was there an appraisal done before they purchased that property?
I don't recall an appraisal being done.
Neither.
Thank you.
Stella Ramirez, Selma, California. Is there currently property taxes paid for this lot? Does anyone know?
There is property tax paid by a city if they're holding property and not using it for a public purpose.
So city meaning taxpayers. Do you know how much we're paying for, per year?
No, I don't. It's something that's easily determined though, and I can find that and get it back to you.
Okay, so if we're paying for a lot that's just sitting there and that is being done, I would say that we should sell it and get that money back and put it into our reserve or wherever it needs to go. So I think that would be our best option. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody online or on the phone with a comment on this item?
Mayor, I see no hands raised.
That will bring the matter back to council. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion.
Call the roll, please.
Jim's second.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
No.
Mayor Robertson.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, next item, 45, action item, consideration and necessary action on resolution 2025-80R, authorizing the city manager to sign contracts with Allied Benefits for TPA services.
Mayor, members of council, each year the, your health insurance committee starts working on coming up with the skeleton of your health insurance and we started off with a meeting just last week in regards to heading towards open enrollment. Part of that meeting, the discussion on the TPA services, that's your third-party administrator that processes all the claims for health insurance, dental and vision. And whether the city was happy with their performance, there had been some issues that have been identified from both Blue Cross and Blue Shield with this vendor. The city has had some minor issues. They've not been able to fully implement the self-insured program that we're on, which takes the, our broker to then have to do some manual adjustments every time an employee terminates from our program. The, the standard is that typically an employee, when they leave service from a city, from any employment, they're termed at the end of the month. In Selma, you have your employees paying, prepaying their insurance and so when they term one month, they still are on the insurance for an additional month. And so they've paid for that and we collect that, their portion of it through the payroll system, but that's not an industry standard and they've not been able to accommodate that in their system. So when we started looking at the problems that we've had with them, the problems that Blue Cross and Blue Shield have had with them, the broker went out to bid to see what the other TPAs would cost. Allied came in just about $2,000 over what we're paying Health Now and their services are rated in a much higher capacity with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And they offer some services that we're not getting for employees currently. One of the things that we have a teledoc system, so employees, if you're at home and you're on our insurance, you can, and maybe you have a sinus infection, you can call in through the teledoc system, never having to go to the doctor, but you get to have services through a doctor. Right now you have to actually know the teledoc system and go to it separately. Through Allied, it'll be through the Allied app. And so you go right straight to the app, you punch in through a link and go straight through. So there's some enhanced benefits for those that are on the city's health insurance. And so the health insurance committee recommended that we move to Allied for such a minor separation and cost 2,000, they felt it was worth being able to have them adhere to our program with that extra month and having the additional services. And so we have to notify Health Now that we are moving to a different TPA by the end of August. And so this is why this is before you now. And so otherwise we would, would have been bringing it separately. The main thing is we need to be able to have the authority to notify them that we have authorized to go to a different TPA service.
Questions for the HR?
On this note, on the coverage, it'll, it will not change. It'll still be adequate as far as their benefit coverage?
This isn't dealing with benefits. This is dealing with the processor of who is, who is processing. So when someone goes to the doctor, the doctor claims comes into your processor and then they look to make sure that it's all in accordance with our contracts. One of the enhancements also with the Allied is they also have a special team that look at all the claims, especially your bigger claims. And they go through them itemized and they try to negotiate those down. We don't have somebody negotiating on our behalf right now. And so we're hoping that we'll be able to actually save some overall cost. Benefits will be coming to you. Our committee is scheduled to meet again in September and October to be able to put those, that benefit package together and then bring in a recommendation to council. And so this is just doing, dealing with processing of the claims, not the actual benefit structure.
So the 30 days, the employees prepaid 30 days. So if an employee has already paid for 30 days and quits or is termed before, you know, that, that time is up. You're saying that the city can't just, or the TPA can't just send them a refund for that 30 days of health insurance? They actually have to provide that health insurance on a non-Cobra basis for the 30 days?
That is correct.
Is that's what, it sounds like that is the Achilles heel of the TPA. They were not able to come up with a way to actually take account of those, that exist, that gap, that 30-day extension of health insurance. Which doesn't seem to me like that big of a rarity, like other cities probably allow their employees to pay up 30 days. No, we're the only one? Then why don't we change our policy and have?
It, it's something we can certainly look into.
Because it's, it's screwing up the TPA.
Well, the new TPA, Allied can accommodate it.
How are they, I mean, but they're $2,000 more. So we're, now we're paying more because our policy is kind of, now I'm, I'm listening and it's, we're the ones who are doing something that's a little out of kilter here and, and confusing the TPA. Maybe the TPA wasn't as bad as we're hearing and they just, you know, couldn't adjust to what our practice was. And we're the customer, so they should adjust to what we do, but if no other city is doing it, then maybe we ought to just stop having the employees pay 30 days in advance. What's the logic for that?
I apologize. I haven't been with Selma long enough to tell you. I was a little bit surprised in that lag. I've not seen that because it's not an industry standard. So I don't know where that practice started.
Because you're paying for something you, you're not getting, you haven't gotten yet.
You do get it. So it actually.
Unless you quit.
But you do get it. So if I, if I leave, if I leave employment today with the city of Selma and I'm on insurance, then instead of my insurance lapsing at the end of August, it now lapses into September. And so because I am paying in advance, it keeps me on, which from an employee benefit, it's actually is a nice benefit because as employees are transitioning to a new employer, a lot of times they have a 30-day wait. And so they're able to get that, you know, coverage instead of having to pay Cobra. I do not know what the rationale is, why you're doing that. I can also tell you that Blue Shield has put Health Now on notice that they will no longer let them write any additional business. And so that's a red flag for the health insurance committee, that there are bigger problems. Also.
It's not just the 30-day issue that they had a problem with. They're having a problem paying claims for a lot of different cities. Okay.
Yeah, and so it was more of a, instead of being on defense and having the possibility Health Now closes later, we felt like we should be on offense and be, you know, go ahead and move over. Also, because of the possibility, because Allied goes out and looks at the claims and tries to negotiate those down, we feel like we're in a better position to save money and in a self-insurance environment also.
We'll, we'll see. We'll see if they do get them lower. Any other comments? Okay, so another question I have is when can we go back to CalPERS and reapply for coverage there?
I can find out for you. I do not know that answer.
I think we were told five years when they moved it. It's been two years now.
We're going on three.
Going on three, so that would leave two more years. So hopefully we can.
Get that answer for you.
Yeah, get a, get a quote through them. Okay, anybody comment from the public?
Salas, I'm on the insurance committee. And when this was explained to us, they said that Health Now, Blue Cross has completely dis, disassociated themselves from Health Now. And Blue Shield is not allowing any new business to come to them. So it just looks like they're just shrinking in on themselves. And so we felt that rather than wait, and, and in two months for them to say, oh, we're closing up shop and leave us high and dry, that we would take this proactive step and just leave them now. Another thing is they were charging us for something. I, I don't remember because I don't have the thing in my mind, but there, that is included in something that Allied is already charging or not charging us for, that they're charging us for. So the difference is actually less than, than what it looks like on paper because they're including some other services that Health Now was charging us for, that they're not because it's just included in the whole package. So the health committee, we, we all discussed it and we felt like it was to the city's advantage to change to a company that would be able to service us in the future without any issue popping up. They don't have any restrictions on who they can offer service to as opposed to the way Health Now was changing. The other thing is that when I was working for this city, insurance was not available till the month following your employment. So if you started working in August, you didn't get insurance till September. So that's why when you ended in August, you ended up with an extra month of insurance at the end. But you're still paying your portion of the premium. The city's paying for part of it, but I, as the employee, would still pay for my portion to be able to have that extra month of coverage. It isn't really an extra month. It's just the way it, the cutoff is.
Just if you're not an employee anymore, you really don't, you're not entitled to having that, that coverage. At that rate, you should be on Cobra.
Well, it's, yeah, but they said that because we're paying, we've, I've already paid that, that in my August check. I paid for my September insurance. So that's why I'm getting it because we pay in advance.
I get, I mean, there's always that elimination period of a month everywhere. You can't get health till the next month when you start anywhere. So, but then they don't do it. So I'm just wondering why the city retains that antiquated practice.
They just said that we, we pay our insurance in advance. So right now in August, I've already paid for my September insurance. So if I leave in August, I've already paid for my September.
I get it. No, I get the account. I mean, I get the mechanics, just, you know, and then the rates roll over and they're different rates and you're already paid up a month on the old rates. It's just kind of clunky. I can see why the cities wouldn't do that. And maybe the insurance committee could take a closer look at maybe recommending a change in policy on that. Okay, thanks. Anybody else with a comment? Anybody online or on the phone with a comment about the TPA for the health insurance plan?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. That will bring the matter back. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Osagara.
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. Okay, future agenda items. Council requests for future agenda items not subject to public comment. Items require a consensus. Do any council members have future agenda items they would like to bring up and get a consensus for?
Forgot me.
So sorry. Okay, let's, let's start over. So Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move on to future agenda items. Now we're going to ask council members for future agenda items. Does anyone have an item they would like to bring up for a future council?
Yes, I do, Scott. I want to, next council meeting, an update on the sewer line, on the railroad tracks, where we're at, on the two services that we have under the railroad tracks that have to be rectified with the.
Temporary sewer line.
Yeah, sewer line. And also the issue that we had, the flooding. One of the issue we had flooding in that, one of the fields. I don't, or I had to find out and ask K if, if there's any damages to the sewer pipe, if it, if it went down as a flooding structure. So we, and we'll need information as far as that.
On the flooding situation, that gentleman, the farmer, farmer guy came and asked us about it at the last council meeting, Mr. Luhon. Okay, first one, is there consensus to get an update on the sewer line? Yes, yes. Item, is there consensus to get an update on the flooding situation that we heard about last meeting? Yes. Okay, anybody else with?
I have a couple. I just wanted to know, do we have the renderings for the 10-acre park ready?
Um, we have plans that we could present. I think they're like 95% plans for the park. We can send those out to council. We could do an agenda item.
Okay.
As we, as we stated, we're still working with CID on some of the undergrounding of the open air canal over there and, and working through that issue. I think you heard us talk about it as part of the ATP grant project, but that same stretch of open air canal does affect the park. And so we've had an ongoing discussion about, about that. So, but if you would like an agenda item, we can, we can bring an agenda item.
Okay.
A consensus to get, have an agenda item for the.
I do have one more.
Yes, consensus.
First, is there a consensus per Mayor Protem's? I'm yes. Okay.
Okay, and I have, also, I'd like to know, do we have a date as to when we will see the renderings for Lenar's track homes?
I don't have a date. I, I had discussions with Lenar prior to budget about when they were pulling permits, which would be Q1, Q2 of 2026. So I would anticipate them submitting plans probably in the next month or two. I have a meeting with them on Thursday. I can find out.
Okay. And then this is just, was brought back to my attention just in regards to the, the sign, the ugly sign that we have on Kettleman's property. It's like, when are they, are they going to move that soon? Because it, it was brought to my attention again.
Is there consensus to address this topic? Is Chicago listening?
Can we just direct, somebody?
Yeah, we could just.
I, I am here.
He's, he's listening.
I, I am here. So I, I know, I know that that question has come up quite often. I'm.
Um, I'm trying to work with what now we have combined the, uh, I believe the Rec Committee and the Pioneer Village Committee um, together. So the, from what my understanding is, is that sign was moved there originally by the Pioneer Village Committee because they wanted to restore it. Um, there's a lot of people that want that to happen or for the sign to go away. So I will be working with the new Community Services Director to try to get to the the root of what the, what the plan is with that sign at Kettleman's.
The uh, Direction Public Works Director from Council has been to um, absolutely get those more intricate um, plans finalized it, but what we would like to do and what Council has directed is to move it from where it currently is because it looks like it's a current sign saying, hey, welcome to Selma. And it's not. It's, it was a sign on the ninety-nine for years. And the reason it was taken out there to that area is to commemorate its position as as the welcoming sign to Selma, which has been replaced by more high-tech flat-screen displays. Um, but it's, you know, it has its place in the history, but it doesn't have its place where it is right now. It should be within our sort of museum piece of Pioneer Village and it should be picked up and relocated. Are you saying you cannot pick it up and relocate it without doing damage to it or?
No, sir. No, sir. I'm not saying that at all. If if directions coming from Council through the City Manager and we're directed to remove that sign, we absolutely can go remove that sign. I'm not worried about damaging it. Um, and we can discuss at a later council meeting, um, where exactly, or we can work through Community Services and that newly for converged committee um, on exactly where inside the fence of Pioneer Village, we would like to place that to commemorate it and to be part of that historic Pioneer Village.
I think that's a great plan. The first phase is just, you've been directed to just pick it up and take it away from there. And then the next phase after that is what to do with it from there, which the um, newly minted um, Parks and Community Services Commission would decide on and debate and decide what to, what to do on that. But for right now, um, the direction is is pretty clear. Just pick it up and take it away from there.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Councilman?
You know, um, you know, I'm, I'm in a piggyback about not too long ago, Sarah brought something up. And it just struck me right now. On the corner of Floral and um, on Wit- on Witson, that uh, Chevron Station, they haven't finished that sidewalk there on the, on the, on the right-hand side. Like as part of Golden State deal, they've been there sitting there for a long time. Are they coming back to fix it? We gotta find out.
So I I can answer that, Councilman Avalos. So PG&E has finally, I can tell you, our building inspector, Mr. Cochrane, went out just last week to actually certify and put the green stickers on the new power cabinets that are part of the Rule sixteen work that's happening as that, as part of that GSB project. So what happens at that point is that PG&E actually puts them on the schedule to come out and start pulling all that cable and basically buttoning up that job, which includes the pouring of those ADA ramps that are at the corners and finishing those intersections. So that is in the process. But again, the reason why it has been delayed for so long is because we are on PG&E's schedule and it is literally taking this long to get to that point. I can tell you that before the end of last year, we signed all of, I personally signed all of the contracts for PG&E for that work with the county so that the county could pay the permit fees as part of the project and get on the schedule to get that work done. So it's in the process and we've been hounding uh, the county representatives about hurrying up. We need to get that done. So that is in in the process of happening right now.
And and there's another thing on the Pioneer uh, Village. Uh, it was brought up by someone out in the audience, that the restrooms, if we're gonna bring in any new uh, built-in modules, you know, like we did at um, Ringo Park, you know, built, and also here at Lincoln Park, these new module bathrooms, are we gonna put, upgrade the ones that we have at uh, at the Pioneer Village? Because the ones we have at Pioneer Village, uh, how would I say? I feel they're not adequate. They're not nice. In other words, we gotta spruce them up because if we have an event there, um, not a, how would I say it? It's not a, it's not a, it's not a very lasting good impression to the public. Feel that we should spruce it up as far as the restrooms, expand it, because uh, especially when they have an event, uh, it's a long line. You have a, an event there. I don't care what kind of event you have. It's a long line of people going to the restroom. I think we have to expand that restroom and make it more presentable. Because as it is now, it's not very good presentable. It's not, it's not, how, it's, it's not. It has a, it has a, not a very good lasting impression.
We need to check the budget, see what's in there for capital improvements to the parks.
I think.
Which uh, Pioneer Village is one and how much to be allocated towards the the restrooms.
Well, I can, I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, that part of the master plan for Pioneer Village does include restroom upgrades to the current restroom as well as adding new permanent facilities. And I don't want to speak for the director who's present at the meeting from Community Services, but I know that part of renting that facility for any festivity or event, um, part of the requirement is depending on how many people are present, there is a requirement to go through Mid Valley and actually have the extra portable restrooms out there. Uh, and I can tell you, the Public Works has even for certain events uh, such as the Tuhano Festival this last year, we actually opened up and stocked the bathrooms that are in the Danish Building to allow uh, more access to public restrooms that are existing there currently.
Yeah, I mean, we had the Day of the Dead, which had two thousand people come out. We, that really showed how we, we desperately need those, those restrooms. Um, so that's really important to um, to work on that. And we've been talking about this for years, so let's, let's move forward with that. And hopefully Director Fletcher, you can take a look at the budget and see what we have in there for that and see uh, where we could go with a plan to get more, more of those restrooms. Um, I've got a couple items for future um, agenda items. Um, I, just based on what we've been talking about tonight and what we've been talking about with the last several weeks, um, I I really would like to take a look if we could at the RMA and the Irma package and put it out to bid. We haven't done that. I don't think our city, since I've been on, that's fourteen years, put that insurance package out to bid and it's a million thirty-three. I'm not saying it's overpriced. I'm not saying it's underpriced. I'm saying it's just a very significant budget item. And I think for that type of budget item, we should put it out to bid. That is significant. And let's see what else is out there. Um, in terms of our, our city, um, we don't really have a package insurance broker to do that. Um, our HR, um, interim director, do we, do you have the capabilities to look into putting this out to bid, the RMA and the Irma package?
It's not just that. It's, it's workers' comp, it's liability.
It's everything.
Everything. And so that's a massive undertaking because would ha- I mean, you would ha- it would take you probably six months just to gain all of the, all the reporting from you know, all your work comp claims and you know, everything.
You would just need to get lost runs. I I do it for a living. So you would just get lost runs and then you, but you would definitely need a broker to get it out. To, and there are only a few other companies that do this. So I mean, it's a pretty limited field, much like grant writers. But it's a fifth of our general fund. I mean, we're looking at like a four million dollar price tag. So this is, this is very material. We need to look at, at getting a, a comparison on this. And one of the benefits of having a comparison is they come in and tell you, well, you're doing this, you're not doing this, you're doing this. You know, kind of like when you do interviews. People come in and they tell you, well, I looked at your budget or I looked at this and that, and you could be doing, it's very helpful to do something like this. So um, I'm asking for consensus for Council to direct our interim HR director to um, to, to look, our HR manager to look, to do this and to look into this. Um, as to what we would need to do to put this out to bid.
Okay. I um, will also take a look because I'd like to have a better understanding of where your claims are. Um, because obviously I haven't had an opportunity to look at those, so I'll, I'll review all of them.
And I requested lost runs at the end of the year and was provided with those. So you can actually take a look at the minutes of one of our meetings. It's either January or February. We got a, a comprehensive look at the lost runs. The Irma ones were so small, you couldn't read them. So we had to get those re uh, reprinted. Um, I don't know why that happened, but it did. But we did get those reprinted and you could actually read them. Um, and so I believe that's a big step. Uh, but just preparing a list of city properties for property insurance, that's an undertaking right there too. So it's gonna, it's gonna take some, some doing. But a, a good qualified broker who's interested in the commission of um, selling this package and approaching other markets with this, uh, might be able to assist with putting that together for the city. Okay? Thank you. Do we have consensus to look into that? Okay. Um, another item is, let's see, so oh, another item I'd like to um, take a look at is the cost to demo the old police station. We are losing, as we heard from Chicago tonight, eight parking spaces downtown. That is significant for our High Street. We have a police station that is, as someone said about property tax, just sitting there doing nothing right now. It has been doing nothing for years. So why don't, why in the world don't we get rid of that asbestos-lain strewn structure and turn it into parking? Actually have it do something useful for the public. And then if someone wants to put a building on it in the future, sounds good. But for right now, we, we should use it for parking and perhaps like Kingsburg, have a trolley. Have FCRTA provide us with an electric trolley or some sort of transportation for those who can't make it from Front Street to High Street or wherever they're going. So I would like consensus from the Council to request. Um.
Cost factor.
Yeah, a bid or, or a rough estimate of what it would take. Maybe our city engineer, our deputy city manager could assist on this.
Yeah, we figure out how much that would cost. Um, the one thing with the old PD is it's still utilized for storage of evidence and other things like that. So you, eh, eh, there's uh, document records, building plans, but the biggest thing it's used for currently, which I think we just upgraded some of the locks for, was evidence storage. And so we would have to find a new place for evidence storage as well, uh, as part of, if it was gonna be considered for demolition. So taking that into account, a secure facility for PD to store in the long-term for evidence would need to be considered as well. And that would go into a cost factor to acquire another property to do that. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I'm also aware of the C train, yeah, of the parks. And I'm, there's lots of areas, the parks have those storage. I think the Bandits just had to revert to a storage, a C train type of location. The city could possibly look into that as well. Um, for old evidence storage, which I I'd be interested in how many times the city's actually gone out and retrieved that evidence.
I mean, they're, they're out there, I think, daily retrieving.
In a, in a building with full of asbestos. So I would think it would be a very good thing to move that evidence to another location.
Agree. I don't disagree. However, that's a discussion with, that the chief uh, needs to be involved in as well. But we can, we can go into it. I just wanted to disclose what it's currently being used for. And it is being used by staff for a specific purpose at this time that needs to be considered in that demolition.
And and I appreciate that. And I think your, your disclosure of that reinforces and makes my argument even stronger that we should look into that to move, to get rid of that and find another alternate place for people to go, humans to go and retrieve that, that evidence. So if we could look into that, is, do we have council consensus for that? Okay, great. All right, moving on from uh, future agenda items. If no one has any additional ones?
You didn't ask me again.
You didn't speak up? Again?
And I'm on the wrong side of town. I'm gonna run for the other side of town next time.
Okay, I'm begging you. Please give us your, your item.
Um, the dog dumping, uh, is that a done deal?
No, it's coming back for a public hearing on the second of September.
You excited? It was gonna come this time. I must have been mistaken. Also.
There's a, there's a lag between getting it done here and putting in the newspaper.
That's right, that's right.
They're very picky about when you put those in the news.
Also, the uh, the ordinance that Fresno has for breeding, we wanna look at that?
That one I'm looking at, I'm actually, I've got uh, my associate preparing that.
Thank you. Um, bathrooms of Pioneer Village, um, I know there's a master plan for that, but if I remember right, bathrooms are not at the top of the, the project grade, is that correct? Or do you remember what the, they had a list of different projects?
And they broke it into phases. I don't believe the phases were necessarily chronological. They were broken into phases so Council could choose which ones to act on for budgeting purposes. So if bathrooms are a higher priority, we can move it to either a first phase, second phase, or its own phase.
Yeah, because that place is a goldmine. I mean, if we had better bathrooms, that place we booked every weekend, but because of the bathrooms, um, I mean, I know we get bathrooms at the porta-potties, but I know you ladies can relate to this. Out there it's been used for, for an hour or so. You ladies do not, they avoid us like the plague. They even go like this, back, you animals. You know, and I'm, I'm not trying to be funny because, you know, they all come to us, hey, what's going on? You know, and the re- the bathrooms are their, their regular bathrooms, there's a big line, twenty people in line just to use the bathroom. So I mean, to me, that's a disservice and it's not sanitary. Even, even when we use the, the porta-potties, it's, you know, smells like I'll get up and it's not, it's not a good thing. So we need to, I think one of the first things we need to do is we need to give guidance to whoever's gonna work on this project and get that done because you know what, it's a it should be a big priority for everybody. And I know Director uh, Fletcher agrees with us because we've talked about this for for a long time. So, um, also, I know we were talking about the sign, but last time we went over there to look at Pioneer Village, uh, I saw a clock just sitting there. And somebody was giving me a history, I think Jim, who was Jim?
Yeah.
That was giving me a history lesson and that that clock used to be downtown. Where can we fix it and put it back downtown? I mean, it's a beautiful clock. It's just sitting there riding away.
Mike is still around?
Yes, he's. I, I am. I'm writing notes and scrambling.
Oh, you're writing notes, okay.
No, no, I'm here.
And you're the one, you're the one that gave me the idea that uh, over there downtown, uh, the Tower District, there's a gentleman.
I showed you the clock. Let's be clear. You'd like, the comment was made, why is that here? Why couldn't it be downtown? I said, I don't know. Why couldn't it be downtown? That's, that's how that happened. Uh, I mean, the, the clock is out there as part of Pioneer Village and the, the, the clock is out there at Pioneer Village, from what I believe, as part of that whole historical theme out there. Um.
And I don't like to see it rusty. No way. Let's put it that way.
If I can add really quick, so um, with the Recreation Commission taking over the Pioneer Village, um, just oversight in general, um, there is a lot of historical items that are over at Pioneer Village. And I think part of my goal is um, with this new founded commission is to really consider how we can preserve, preserve some of, some of these items and display them around town as well. So I know that other communities, they'll have like tractors out, they'll have plows out, right? And so we have a lot of those things um, stored at Pioneer Village in our barn. And um, I think it's gonna take the commission to really give some, some guidance on how, how we can display these items. Maybe not just around town, but inside the, inside the park as well. And so those conversations will be have, ha- will be held.
Okay.
In the near future. We'll talk about that, yes.
Good idea. Anything else, Councilman? Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll move on to um, oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address City Council regarding any item on the regular meeting agenda over which the Council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on the item not on the agenda, items not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the City Manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Any parting remarks tonight?
Rose Robertson, ten fifty seven Mill Street. Um, hopefully also we could look at maybe bringing back the rabies shots. Um, we used to do that a couple times a year and people are asking about that again. Um, so hopefully we could um, look into that eventually down the line, bring that back to the um, Um, so hopefully we could, um, look into that eventually down the line, bring that back to the, um, shelter. Um, people were really involved in that, um, and it's a breath of fresh air to see, um, the city council has been taking care of a lot of the, um, these abandoned homes and, and, and places. Um, what have, what have brought the fresh air to see that's coming along. I think the only thing is, there has to be some kind of policy after the fact that when it's, um, uh, demolished and cleaned up, that a lot of weeds don't grow and they just forget about it and could care less about it, cause then it doesn't look, um, nice again. But that's definitely a, a good thing to con, continue to see. And maybe start looking at some of these empty, uh, commercial buildings or buildings that just sit for a long time and they don't do anything with them, and, uh, maybe start looking into something like that and find out why they're just sitting there empty. Um, so anyways, we wouldn't just keep getting some businesses in, um, with, with, that these buildings that aren't just not doing anything. So hopefully that'll be something in the future to look at, thank you.
Hello, in Arizona, California. Um, I just wanna say that I drove in from Clovis to Selma today and I took the old ninety-nine. And wow, it's really nice. I mean, coming into Selma, I don't have to reroute anymore, cause I used to have to go in front of me and Ed's and go around through Floral. And now I'm able to go through where McDonald's is, and then the trees, there is a lot of trees there, so I'm glad that some of them are gonna be pulled out. Maybe they can be transferred over to the Kingsburg entrance, coming from Kingsburg, along that area. I think that would be nice, so I just wanna say, you know, give a shout out to Public Works also, because it looks really good as you come in to Selma. Um, the second thing was, was mentioned about the city attorney's fees. I wanna say that, um, since council came on board and the new attorney, with city attorney was hired, a lot of people don't know that on his part, there was a lot of work that needed to be done. A lot of work behind the scenes, things that he had to take care of. And I even said, wow, he has a lot of stuff, you know, plate on, a lot of, you know, a lot on his plate to take care of. And I just wanted to say that, uh, Mr. Costasano, you're, you're doing a great job, and thank you for coming to Selma's defense, you know, when we needed you to. So I just wanna say that you're doing a good job, you know, so we appreciate you. Um, also, I wanna give a shout out to you, council, for asking all the right questions. Before, we didn't know where our money was going, and now, you know, you're asking those questions so us, as taxpayers can know where our money is going, and we're really, we really appreciate you for that, so thank you, thank you so much.
Anybody else with a comment, anybody online or on the phone with a comment? Hey, we are going to, um, well, we're gonna do, uh, council comments, council reports, which we didn't do before oral communications, but we will do now. Does council have any thing they'd like to say before we close into closed session?
Uh, yeah, I'm, on the next, uh, on our next council meeting, I'll give you an update on, uh, the Amberwood project with SKF as well.
Right.
And also the Clark Station, uh, Liv Station as well, and, and, um, and the, there'll be more update on SKF, uh, future plans with the city. And so I'll be informing you guys, you know, those, those id, items, very important.
Thank you. Councilman Trio, did you have any parting comments before we go into closed session? Councilman Trio.
Yes, um, I just wanna piggyback on what, um, Director Fletcher was saying, our, uh, our event for September twenty-sixth is coming along really nice, uh, it's gonna be bigger than nineteen queen.
You're done, no, I'm just kidding.
Man. See, I don't even get respect from over there either.
The award goes.
I'm gonna be like Ronnie Dangerfield, I get no respect. Anyways, like I was saying, um, everything's coming together really nice, we, um, we received the money from our sponsors, um, we're gonna, there's gonna be a lot of nice cars out there. Um, and I just wanna give kudos to, uh, Liz, who has, um, a staff of two, and is doing an awesome job, so hopefully we can give her more help. But, uh, if you get a chance to come out September twenty-sixth, if you like Goldie's music, Pepe Marquez and Raquel Ramirez, if you've never heard of them, look at them on, on YouTube, and you're gonna be pleasantly surprised, cause these are recording artists, so. It'll be a, a good, good time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Nothing to report.
And then I just have one item to report, um, we're gonna have the FCRTA ribbon cutting, um, for the maintenance facility. That's going to be on Pacific Street, um, the, um, that is gonna happen on Friday at ten. Just wanted to invite department heads, if you guys would like to come out for, um, for lunch, there'll be food trucks there. Um, there's gonna be no parking, the director asked me to remind, um, folks coming out there for that ribbon cutting that the parking is gonna be on the street, it's not gonna be within the facility itself. So if you're coming out there to, uh, join us on that, it's gonna be nice, this, um, those of us who've been around a while, we've seen this start out in two thousand eighteen, and now it's, it's done, it's, it's completed, and it's, uh, it's a real jewel in the crown of, uh, Selma and Fresno County. And I wanted to thank our member of the public for coming up and, you know, giving, giving, uh, a, a thanks to the hardworking folks on, on staff. And, um, it's, it's always nice to be recognized, and we fully are aware that we signed up to, you know, not just ask for, um, praise and name on, names on plaques, but to solve the problems and to help, you know, work as a, as a team with the people of Selma, um, through the actual, um, work of the staff and the directors of Selma. So thank you, thank you to everybody who, uh, makes our city such a great place to live and work in. And with that, we're going to recess into closed session, and we'll say goodnight to everybody else, thanks for, for coming out.
Good night.
Thank you, Jerome, for doing the board.
You're welcome.